Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, May 10th, 2021. We are streaming live via Zoom and on YouTube. Let's get started with public participation. If you are in the chat, you can participate by raising your hand. Seeing none, we're going to move on. We have next on the agenda, the consent agenda, but I've been told that there are enough people and I've received enough requests from the Citizens Communication Council from residents who want to participate. I'm going to be asking the board, is there consensus? Could we skip to that before the consent agenda? Is there any objection?
No objection.
No objection.
Okay, hearing none, let's handle item 3A and then we will move back to the consent agenda. This is the Citizens Communication Council update and status. So who can lead us in?
Do you want me to, since I guess I kind of requested this? I'm glad to.
If you're comfortable, please.
Or Bill, I mean, so my concern about this, you know, the Citizens Communications Council has not met for quite some time. And we have residents who are ready, willing, and anxious to serve in the capacity that they've been appointed on the council. So I think, you know, the council does serve at the, you know, pleasure of the board, or at least the members do. They've been appointed by us, or at least boards past. So there is an ordinance that formed the Communications Council, which I believe we have available. And I guess what I was hoping to get out of this is some direction from my board colleagues about how we ask the council to proceed and the meaningful work that we can ask them to do under the ordinance. Is the ordinance still relevant? Is the work that was, I believe, when it was created and then again revised at some point, is that still relevant? So that is kind of what, you know, I was hoping to get out of it, then maybe provide them with some direction moving forward, get them back on track when it comes to their meetings, advising who the members are, who's still willing to serve, who is no longer interested or would like to be replaced. So that's some of the conversation, and I know some of the board, some of the members of the council have some thoughts around that. So if it pleases the board and they're able to speak on that, I think, and then we could perhaps look at or talk about the ordinance and then again, decide where we go from there. Is that helpful? Helpful lead in?
Yeah, if I could just add to that, I, that is a very helpful lead in. I think administratively, and I don't want to speak for Molly, she's the one who has been trying for the last couple of months to, to get the group together based on the, you know, what the ordinance, the, the meeting schedule that the ordinance calls out. I know they've had some trouble getting together. So I, it may be an issue where there's a member or two that doesn't have the same interest that they've had before. And maybe if, if, once the board identifies projects or initiatives that they would like the group to work on, it may help shape the membership or reshape the membership for those who are interested going forward. So it seems like the best place to start is what is the Board of Commissioners looking for from the group? And then, you know, obviously the members can, can provide their input and we can go from there.
Well, I think it's, we have a statute, so I'm looking for the items covered in the statute to be covered by the Communication Council. So I'm kind of, I don't know why we have any confusion. There's certain items that are covered, so let's cover those items. If you want to read the statute, do you have that handy, Bill?
I do not have it handy. I would lean to Molly on that one.
I have it handy.
Or I have it.
So the, so the duties, the duties, and these are in the administrative code for the Citizens Communication Council. There are six duties of the Citizens Communication Council. One is to advise the board and township staff on policy relating to cable television, telecommunications, wireless facilities, new and emerging, emerging communication technologies. Two is review and as may be directed by the board, negotiate cable franchise right away and other agreements and make appropriate recommendations. Three is recommend policies and procedures governing the use and operation of the townships' public, educational, and governmental television access channels, the PEG channels. Four is evaluate applications and plans for cell towers, DAS, which are these little distributed antenna systems, microcell, and other communication facilities in the public rights of way and township owned property. Five is evaluate application and plans, submitted for cell towers, DAS, microcell, and other communication facilities, and make recommendations to the zoning hearing board. And six is to consider complaints dealing with cable television and other communication issues in the township and make appropriate referrals and recommendations. So just one point regarding this, this ordinance goes back to 2009. And a lot has changed since 2009 in the telecommunications world. The big, the one big issue, and we know this after dealing with Comcast and some other issues, is that municipal control and governance has been eroded by the federal government, basically. And much of what these communications companies do is now regulated by the PUC, where before there was much more local regulation. So as I'm reading this ordinance, I'm doing it knowing that a lot of these things in here are no longer relevant. And the township doesn't have the ability to step in. Communication Council certainly doesn't have the ability to step in either. So there's some, I mean, just on the ordinance, there needs to be some revisiting of what the role would be in the, in the new world of, you know, the telecommunication that's out there now. So that's, and that's in the administrative code, section 5-38. Membership is nine registered electors. And there's terms of office of five years. And that is basically what you have on the books at this point.
John, what are the items that need to be revisited? Those all sounded pretty general to me and are still applicable. Basically, provide input on contracts, provide input on cell towers, provide input and review to zoning hearing board, provide input on the PEG channels and their operations. What, what has changed that would need to be codified in that, in that administrative code?
All of the review of plans and zoning related issues are, you know, really out of the township's control, out of the Communications Council control. Permits and plans, I don't think that group ought to be reviewing a permit and plan that comes in. In a lot of cases, we don't have the right to do it. And the federal government, as I said, has instituted a lot of different regulations, such as a shot clock. When you get an application, you have a certain period of time to make a decision or it's deemed approved. That's something that township staff is going to have to deal with. That's not something for an advisory board. Rich, the way I read this, this is an advisory board, and it may have been back in 2009. There was much more involvement in, in day to day. I don't think there's any zoning hearing board applications anymore that would come through, given, you know, what the Pennsylvania Supreme Court said about two years ago, that a lot of these newer facilities are regulated by the PUC.
So you're talking about basically the microcell and, and other facilities within right of way.
DAS, microcell, what, exactly what is in here? I mean, there's still some issues, maybe with cell towers.
Right.
We're not seeing your traditional cell towers anymore. You're seeing existing cell towers where there's co-location, and there's some relatively new statutes on that that have limited municipality's ability to regulate co-location. So you know, this group, I think the, you know, policies and procedures dealing with complaints, they're all good areas where no one's really addressing that at this point, since the group hasn't been meeting. You know, there's certainly recommendations that the group could make regarding agreements regarding enforcement. But I mean, I, I, I think that the, the items that are listed here as duties need to be substantially reworked so that the group doesn't go down a path that they don't have any authority to go down.
And John, just real quick, if I could add in, we do have a draft ordinance and design guidelines from the Cohen Law Group regarding amendments to the, the cell tower portion of our development code. So that is, I mean, that's, that would be in line with at least the, the cell tower piece of the duties and probably something that this group could at least work on in terms of providing input back to the board before that the board votes on the ordinance itself. And then as it pertains to PEG and the operations there, I, I think even when we tried to get this scheduled, we, we've seen where the lines get blurred between the Board of Commissioners subgroup and the mainline TV group, and that, that has added some complications and resulted in some start stops over time. So it'd be nice for that to be cleared up, or at least to be clearly defined, that the, this, this committee is, is separate from the mainline TV committee with the, with separate goals and objectives. As written in the ordinance now, it, as we've seen over the last, well, since 2009, where those lines get blurred. So it'd be nice to clean that up. And then just real quickly with regard to the cell towers, the actual review of plans and, and recommendations to ZHB, the last small cell site to be installed in the township was over 10 years ago. That's not to say that more won't come in down the road, but it is certainly not something that is happening with any regularity. So my point being there, not that it's irrelevant or not useful, it's that the committee probably would need more areas to look at or more areas to help out with versus just that. Because that, I don't think that'll give them enough work.
Well, I, I don't, I don't see that, but I know it's, you know, within a few months ago, we had people before the Board of Commissioners complaining about microcells in the right of way in their, in their, in their residence. Also, to the extent that we don't have cell towers coming before the board, then they, Communications Council doesn't need to address it. But otherwise, I, I don't see where we would need to spell out of 501(c)(3) that runs a, a, the TV station is separate from the Citizens Communications Council. They're, they're separate entities and they're, they're not in any way that I could see in that statute. Doesn't, it doesn't bring in the Radner Studio, Radner Studio 21 board. So I think that that's up to the board members to make sure that they know that they're separate when they're acting on behalf of the Radner Studio 21 versus the Citizens Communication Council. And I'm using Radner Studio 21. I, I'm told that there has not been a registration of the mainline TV name within the Pennsylvania Secretary's Office for fictitious names. So if that's not correct, then I'll, I'll stand corrected. But just to reflect the information I have, I, I'm using Radner Studio 21 still.
So just, so we clear that up, there is a requirement in the code that one of the members be appointed by Radner Studio 21. So the, your membership is, you know, Ben, and I've been around since 2009, so I was not involved with this ordinance. I came in after that. I don't know what the discussion was leading up to it, but there was always two or three members of Radner Studio 21 on the Citizens Communication Council. I don't know what the membership is today. I've been told it's, it's different. But you know, I think the members, some of whom I see or hear, you know, maybe need to be polled as to what they think their role is and what they would like their role to be.
So.
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
No, I, I was just going to say, you know, I think the other thing that has changed for us as a township is we do have now a public information officer, someone who is working on communications initiatives for the township. Is that something that needs, I mean, it seems like what's here is extremely, you know, kind of like on the technical telecom side. But are there other things where they could be working with Molly and advising, you know, as, as Molly's working on a new website, could they be helping to beta test a new website? Could they be working on other communications initiatives and, and supporting and working with Molly as township representatives? And providing feedback and information on that. And if that was added to these, this ordinance or in those responsibilities, is that still something that everybody who is involved and originally became involved or whatever would be interested in, in doing, is that also meaningful work? I guess my question around the cell towers, and I'll ask John and Bill, because you guys are well aware of the issue that I have in my ward. If, if this, if, if this had been in operation the way it was, it's written, and this, you know, these types of applications coming to this group beforehand, do you think something like that would have, what I'm, I've experienced in my ward and it's impacting my neighbors, have been avoided or no? Because we really don't have any say anymore in where those cell towers go? Or the small cells?
Well, Lisa, that particular situation, I mean, that tower may have predated the formation of this board, so.
Yeah, that's right.
And that would have been one issue. I mean, there are things that predate 2009 that are out there that, but the complaints, the concerns, they, that could have been handled by this board, certainly. You know, in one spot with everyone that, you know, had an issue with this, with the group, with the council.
So I could have, so I could have taken that concern to the Communications, Citizens Communication Council and kind of worked through it there?
Correct, yeah. Because right now it says, you know, one of the elements, one of the duties is consider complaints dealing with cable television and other communication issues. So you know, it could have been vetted there. It could have been some research there by the group. And probably would have been more efficient to do it that way. But you know, so those types of things arise, I mean, I don't know, maybe two or three times a year, there's a complaint. There's been complaints about 5G, sort of general 5G complaints. So those, you know, this, this group and the ordinance that Bill mentioned would be, that would be a perfect example of something that the group could vet and provide feedback to the board of commissioners.
But John, if, if I could, just based on the conversations we've had with the, this, the micro towers in Mr. Nebraska's ward, yes, they could hear the complaint and they could research and provide information back to the board, but, but what authority does the board have to then make any, any kind of intervention into the installation of that? My understanding is that our hands are tied as a municipality. And I, I think that's important only because I, I'd hate to set expectations here and, and have this committee work hard on either supporting or, you know, not supporting a particular site being installed, submitted to the Board of Commissioners, only to learn that there's really nothing we as a township can do anyway, and it's going up or not going up, whatever the situation may be. I just don't want people to work on something that, at the end of the day, we don't have authority to control.
They assist with a complaint to the PUC? So that's where we're going with that? Could they assist with that?
I'm not sure that would be appropriate for a committee, a council without board approval, commissioner approval to get involved in any kind of a, you know, judicial proceeding. I, I think that, you know, taking Bill's example, you know, a complaint could go to this council. I would assume the council would be trained, educated, make themselves aware of what, you know, what the township can and can't do. And that the expectations and whatever would be said to someone who coming in for a complaint would basically be consistent with that, that the township's jurisdiction stops at a certain point. And it may not make someone who's complaining happy, but they have an answer. Sometimes, you know, an individual complaint to the PUC will get the attention of the utility. It'll certainly get the attention of the PUC. They have consumer advocates. They have, there's a consumer advocate office. So, you know, the PUCs, it's sort of a different proceeding. They have, well, actually they have formal and informal proceedings. But that's something that this group could refer a resident to, to follow up on, not necessarily step in and, and go down that path without the Board of Commissioners approving something like that. But I think this is, Lisa, I think there's, you know, there's education here that has to happen. And it has to happen that it, you know, for this group to handle anybody coming in front of them and expecting the township or this group to solve a problem that maybe we don't have the jurisdiction to do. As I, I hate saying this, because I've been in more than a few cell tower zoning cases over the years and, you know, the local government regulation has, has slowly eroded over the last 10 years. And the, the, the smaller facilities are now under the jurisdiction of the PUC, and they have a set of rules that, you know, this council could certainly become familiar with and advise people accordingly as to what's out there. But I do think a lot of what's in this is outdated. It needs to be revisited. It's cer- certainly something that, you know, maybe Dan Cohen could weigh in on. He's weighing in on the ordinance itself. And he's, he's the expert in the field.
John, could you briefly go through what it referred to with respect to input on the PEG channels?
Would I go through?
Yeah. What did it say again in the statute? It said, provide guidance, input to the board about the operation of the PEG channels, et cetera?
It says, recommend appropriate policies and procedures governing the use and operation of the township's PEG television access channels. So, you know, basically, you know, putting forth a set of policies and procedures, recommending something to the board regarding those PEG channels.
Right. And so that's still valid?
No, I, that's, I'm not saying you throw all this out, Rich. I think that, that makes sense. The advise the board on matters relating to telecommunications and consider complaints. But there's two or three paragraphs in here which deal with plans and reviewing plans and making recommendations to the zoning hearing board. That's outdated. That is totally outdated. And it makes no sense to me to have a set of powers in here that can't be exercised under the way the current law is.
Well, John, I remember as late as 2017, we were talking about cell towers, tradit- new cell towers and locating them in several locations in the township. So why, what does it hurt to have that in there? I don't, I don't understand why you would take that out in case it comes up.
Well, I think that that, you know, you're right, there was a lot of discussion, but as you know, it never got beyond that. There aren't any new cell towers. That is something that the Board of Commissioners, because the discussion was about township land, that is something that the Board of Commissioners, if they, if there was ever a consensus to put a cell tower on township land, they could refer that to this group. But to say across the board that any plans that come in are going to be reviewed by this group, I think that's a bad policy.
So what I'm hearing is we've got some outdated materials in our ordinance. I'm going to suggest, John, if you can work with Dan Cohen and take into account the feedback that I suspect we're going to get when we go to public comment to draft a revision of the ordinance and bring it back to us. Once we have something concrete that we can put in front of people, we can get some additional public feedback and then vote on a change. Any objections from the board before I open up public comment?
Jack, before you go to public comment, since we are talking about the, this committee, could we hear from some of the members who've been involved? Or is that considered public comment?
That's public.
Okay.
Do any of the other commissioners have any specific issues that they would like for the Communications Council to address that they haven't, or that they think that they should have in the past or in the future?
I'd say to the extent that Molly has worked that she can use their input from, that's something that it would be nice to open up to Molly, so she has that resource. But I don't know of a specific project for which she could use them.
Yeah, I see those as different items that have a distinct firewall between them. I, I don't see Molly's job role as, as encumbering or as overlapping with the Citizens Communications Council. But I think that there, I have received, and I have a comment, I received a comment, and I think I'll refer to you, Jack, to read with the public comment. But I, I hear, I hear a lot about the television station, how it's operated, and and of course, as you know, there was a lot of complaints by the Citizens Communication Council that they were effectively left out of negotiating the Comcast contract for the collection and remission of the, the fees associated with the Comcast cable subscribers. So that's negotiating and providing input on the contracts is definitely in the statute. We really didn't include them to a great extent for the last four or five years that that was worked on. So I think that, that that's an issue that, that they have some kind of, they're, they're a bit disgruntled about being left out of that. And there's certain other issues that I hear about the operations of our governmental channel that, that there's people that have input on what they'd like to see as far as how that's operated. So those are the issues that I've heard. And I, again, I, I welcome their review of cell phone towers, microcells, the input that they can provide, I think is helpful. I would not write that out in case it comes up. micro cells, the input that they can provide, I think is helpful. I would not write that out in case it comes up.
So I would, I would like to further, you know, hear from the committee and I'd also, I, I think as we look to revise or update the, the ordinance so that it, it really does provide meaningful work, obviously. Kind of what we've got here now, for whatever reason, was not guiding the council enough for them to be meeting and to be contributing in the way I think that many of the members want to. I have some concerns about members of the peg channel being on this board and helping to craft. I don't know, that might, to me, it seems like a little bit of a conflict if they're crafting, uh, uh, working on crafting a contract that is money that's basically passing through to them. I, I have a little bit of concern with that, but I'm certainly open to hear what the members might think and consider about that and certainly ours, Solicitor, and if we involve Mr. Cohen, our telecom attorney, I would be glad to hear that as well.
I'd like to, I guess my, my issue is having not been on the board when many of the folks were appointed to this this committee. I guess I, you know, it's very technical and regulatory issues that are spelled out in the ordinance. It's been read this evening. Versus, you know, communications and, you know, a different sense, which is more about, you know, presentation and website and raising awareness. So I, I recognize that those are two very distinct issues. You know, this board, I guess I would be one, you know, we have, we have counsel who we go to on the technical and regulatory issues. And I haven't been around to see how this group was involved in those sorts of processes at the time. So I would just question about the types of folks who are stepping up to do this work. You know, what is their background? Is it who, you know, who we think is the, the appropriate makeup of this committee in order to advise us there? Maybe very, you know, I, I know that everybody has a very distinctive background. So I'm not by any means trying to say that they're not able or capable, but is it the appropriate type of membership in order to do the regulatory and technical side? And if, if not, and we have folks who want to do more of the other types of communications, is that a separate group that we would organize that maybe isn't directly in the ordinance, but is a volunteer committee of citizens and residents who are interested in more marketing and communication style. So I just see the qualifications are, are very different. And I want to make sure that the makeup of the, of the groups are appropriate for what we're asking and tasking them to do.
I, um, I, I want to hear from the committee because we've, I think we've talked this to death.
Yeah, agreed. And I'm going to say we-
Excuse me, Commissioner Larkin, I'm sorry, I wasn't.
I'm, I'm sorry. I was trying to agree with you.
No, I appreciate that. But pardon. So yeah, so we've, we've talked this to death. And, and they're here now. So I kind of thought it's kind of long, but, um, but I think that we've appointed them and it's time to see what they want and what, you know, I mean, they've heard us speak. So we should let them speak. Now, go ahead. Sorry, Commissioner Larkin.
Okay. Public comment. Ms. Minicozzi, I see you've been raising your hand for a while. I'm going to ask you to jump in.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. First, I just want to thank everybody for all of your volunteer work that you're doing, everybody on the boards and commissions, and especially the commissioners and the amount of time that you put in. I just so appreciate it. I come from several different backgrounds and one of them is volunteer management, nonprofit management. And I applied to be appointed to the Citizens Communication Council right before the pandemic and was, was appointed, I guess, February before everything shut down. And the main reason why I wanted to be appointed in addition to some telecommunications background is the nonprofit management challenge that we are facing in Radnor Township with regards to the Citizens Communication Council. There is the Board of Commissioners and then there are all of the boards and commissions that advise the commissions. One thing that I think is so important to say is to just point out the history of the Citizens Communication Council, which has had various names over the decades from when cable was a dealt, provided in Radnor Township was Adelphia Cable. I've lived in the township since 1990. So we had Adelphia Cable and there was a, a kind of committee that was required by townships to be in place. And I think that is the origin of this committee. And now over the decades, the purpose and the role of the committee has changed. And I think that's where some of the, the hesitation might come in because this council of various names through the decades did in fact review and negotiate contracts. Now that has changed over the years and even the 2009 ordinance language is such now that this body would simply advise and review and not negotiate. So that language has changed in 2009. So I think it's important to recognize that history first of this council. And, and that might be where some of this is coming from. But from the nonprofit management perspective, the Board of Commissioners is always advised by these commissions. And what I see as a, that is troubling is that there is a gap if, of information for you all as commissioners. The Citizens Communication Council has not met, for whatever reason, we can put that in the past since 2018. Since 2018, there's been an information gap for you all as commissioners, as leaders of our township to have this telecommunications information. Now, I appreciate what Solicitor Rice is saying that it could be that this Citizens Communication Council that really needs to kind of be repurposed, look at what its mission really needs to be. That it might be fulfilled partly by volunteers. You might want another staff member on, on the township staff for some of these more technical telecommunications issues. But so there's, there's been an information gap and it, it's so important, I think, for you all as commissioners to be able to make informed decisions and for you all not to be tasked with trying to learn all of this yourself. And I would point out also that our township has a wealth of expertise in our residents. And we see that across so many of the boards and commissions that are, that are in place. And there are so many volunteers who I have met in my experience who have tremendous expertise in this telecommunications area. A number of them are on Mainline TV. It was previously Radnor Studio 21 in the past. So there's a whole lot of expertise to draw on. And I guess what I would advise, and so I am actually using that word purposefully, is that you all as commissioners vote, recommend that you want that information. So then you can be informed, right? And then, and, and it's an advisory board. But just one last point is I'm hearing people saying that this Citizens Communication Council needs meaningful work, but I think that's the wrong way around. The purpose of the Advisory Commission is to advise you all. So what information do you need? Right? And just hearing this conversation, it sounds like we don't have a total sense of the information that we're lacking as a township and as citizens who participate in our township. So that also needs to be evaluated as well. So those are my main comments. The history, this has been an evolving Citizens Communication Council. I expect it to continue to evolve as technology evolves, right? And in terms of what its purpose and role is, is going to be in the future, who would staff it? That really depends on the information that you all hopefully want to have because I think, you know, you all really want to make informed decisions, but you shouldn't have to do that information collecting yourself, right? And then if we do need an attorney to be involved, like Attorney Cohen who was involved, then, then you draw in that expertise and that doesn't come from the Citizens Communication Council, right? But there's a reality here that the Comcast agreement was voted on and it had no input from the Citizens Communication Council to inform you all as commissioners at all. So I just see that as a gap and I see it as an advantage that you all could get that information. So that's, those are the main couple of things that I would say. It's really very much from a nonprofit management perspective. Even though just to say I'm on the Mainline TV board and I'm also a producer of a program, Have Your Say for Mainline TV. We're up to our 43rd or 44th program. So I very much know the inner workings as well as the board workings of MLTV and how well that is, how well that's, that's going. Very exciting with the studio renovation and the reopening now with the, the pandemic easing up a bit. But, you know, I just champion you all to, to seek that information from residents who have the expertise. And then you all draw on expertise as needed. If you had to bring in an attorney, if you need to bring in some additional telecommunications, that all remains to be seen and defined. So I find this a, a, an interesting and exciting challenge right now. And it's just going to keep, this committee is going to keep evolving, this Citizens Communication Council, because the technology will too. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who is, Mr. Murphy, you're up next. We do not have you, Mr. Murphy. Could you unmute?
Sorry. So good evening. So I'm also on the studio board with Ann. But when I joined the board, I guess a year and a half, two years ago, my main traction was helping the township with cell tower applications, which as I said earlier, I know the same thing, that there is a lot being built. The, the reason why it attracted me was because I have worked in the cell industry as an engineer. So from a technical aspect, I do understand all the factors that go into selecting cell towers and all the issues, you know, surrounding it before and now. So I've worked with AT&amp;T, Comcast, Sprint, companies like that. So the, the one thing that I just wanted to put in for consideration is that with 5G, even though 5G does use micro cells or small cells, I don't think we've really seen the 5G, 5G infrastructure being deployed yet by those, those companies like Verizon, AT&amp;T and Comcast and probably later T-Mobile, Sprint and Dish also is a new player, but they, they tend to put them on telephone poles, utility poles. But we love to say, for example, downtown wage is not, there's the light standards. But when you have six, six companies, you may run out of space. I'm not sure how far the PUC or what's there affects them when they have to go on buildings and things like that. So I'm not saying there's necessarily a need, but something just to consider with 5G. The, the density of antennas is more than what's there today for existing 4G and things like that. And there may be a need for Natasha to ask wireless providers, you know, for a plan before they start putting antennas, you know, throughout the town. So I don't know when that day will come. I, they focus on larger cities first, of course, but eventually you know, the main line is something that I want to roll out too. And once one, uh, once one service provider provides coverage, I'm sure the other ones will want to compete. You know, so you can see Verizon will be first and AT&amp;T and Comcast will be next and so on and so forth. So that's my say.
Thank you very much. Ms. Margolis, did I see that you were up? Okay. Kindly unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm Suzette Margolis and I'm also on the Citizens Communication Council and I probably went on it the longest out of the three of us. One of the things that I just want to say is since 2018, we haven't been asked to read, to convene as a committee. So we've kind of just been in a holding pattern. Another thing that I just want to say is that you know, to me, the reason I joined this council was to serve Radnor Township residents in this area. And I feel that with all the changes that you've described tonight and all the transformation that's gone on since 2009, as residents, we don't know that. We don't know to go to the PUC instead of going to the township. We don't know, we call, first we start with Comcast or Verizon as our provider. And then when we can't figure something out, we call the township. And then if the township can't help us, then we call our state representative and it goes to Government Affairs and it circles back. It's like, it's a vicious cycle I'm all too familiar with. And I think one of the jobs, not to get too detailed, but one of the jobs of this council is to maybe just delineate that with, for residents. Like what is the process when you have a problem with Comcast, when there's a wire in your yard or there's, you know, something going on with Comcast or Verizon? Like what do you do? If, if the township can't help us as residents, what, what is a resident to do? And that's a really important document that we could just post on the website or something, you know? I also have felt over time that there is, there is conflict. Several board members have mentioned, is there a conflict between the Studio 21 and the, and this council? And yes, I think there is. I have seen it in meetings. I've seen it when people politicking behind the scenes with us. And I don't, I don't like it. I think that there's overkill in the township. There's, there's a school station. There's the, there's a lot of different stations and we, we need to just figure out what's the best service for, again, for our residents, for the money. That's something that this council can do, but it can't do when half of its members or a big portion of its members are representing that Studio 21. Which I love, by the way. I do feel it's a very beneficial entity. I just don't know that it should be married to this council. The third thing I just want to mention is just overall, do I think this council should be techies and people who have a lot of background in telecommunications? Yes. However, I think it also needs to be laced with potpourri of township representative people who have different backgrounds because the issues that come up are not all technical. Sometimes they're, they're just a wire hanging in my yard. Sometimes it's, I just don't understand the communications issue, how I can get information from my township. And I don't know, I, I would like to see it rethought and I think that it's a big area of concern for residents. I don't think it's something that is, you know, to be just put, put off on a, a side dish because I have to say I belong to a lot of groups, mainline groups in the area and one of the biggest complaints among families overall is that is telecommunications. It's, you know, nobody knows where to turn. Everybody feels they're overpaying. Everybody, no one's satisfied. But in Radnor, if we could just, you know, alleviate some of that stress and just let people know where to go, let people know that, you know, we're, we're doing what we can and we are, and I, we are going to promote, you know, promote something to a state representative. If that's what's necessary, like I just want to, I just want to feel like I'm on, I'm on a council that's going to help my fellow citizens get what they want out of, out of Radnor Township to help support them and represent them when stuff goes crazy with this.
Okay. Excellent. Is there anybody else who is in the meeting or any attendees who would like to raise their hands for public comment? Mr. Kirby, I see your hand. You're up.
Good evening. My name is Brian Kirby. I'm an attorney. I've been a rep, a member of the council for quite a number of years. And I think it's been touched upon by, by Mr. Booker. And um I think it's been touched upon by uh, by Mr. Booker and, and Mr. Rice. Um I've been on the coun, uh council for quite a few years and. I've joined the council because I thought that I'd be in a position to use my legal background to help review. And one of the primary functions, as been pointed out, was the review and negotiation of contracts with Comcast and Verizon and whatnot. I have a lot of experience in that area. Uh and um, you know, I, I recall back in two thousand and fifteen, I think it was, the Comcast contract was up. For renewal and we were, you know, members of the council, Mr. Hurtel and myself and others were kind of. Uh looking forward to being involved in that process. And it seemed that the, for whatever reason, I don't know the behind the scenes. But it was essentially kind of, my understanding, anyone was taken away from us. Uh and was handled by, you know, I think the commissioners themselves with the assistance of outside counsel or likelihood. Um and then in two thousand and eighteen, I mean, the last time it, it's been pointed out, the last meeting we had was in two thousand and eighteen. And that was in the summer of two thousand and eighteen and, and I recall um. The issue that was sort of at the forefront of that meeting was. The issue around uh emergency communications at the Willows and the desire to possibly place emergency uh. Cell towers, either cell tower or some sort of those mini uh communications devices. That would enable and facilitate emergency communications in Willows area because that had historically been an issue. Um and again, that was another issue that. I and, and other council members were looking forward to kind of sinking our teeth into. And it seemingly, as we were about to do that, it kind of again disappeared. We had a presentation from somebody at the county. Uh it may be as uh Mr. Rice has pointed out and, and others that. Um these issues are something that is kind of out of our legal realm at this point. Uh I don't know, but I, 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 you know, I can speak for myself, I guess. And, and you know, I know from some of the other committees has been touched upon. And there, there has been a level of frustration uh amongst some of the committee members. Because it seems like every time we have the opportunity to really do something material that's going to contribute to the township and fulfill the mission of the, the council. Uh it seems to be sort of removed from the council for one reason or another. Um as far as the um failure to meet since two thousand and eighteen. Um you know, I, it's, I think there was sort of a confluence of circumstances that kind of brought about that result. Um we had difficulty, the, the la, we, you know, the former, I, I believe there's been some turnover in township personnel. And formerly, we, we received sort of regular kind of pings or communications about. The need to schedule quarterly meetings and whatnot, and those were kind of arranged. Um and so I think that that may have played a role in not having meetings. We also, I know, had difficulty in late two thousand and eighteen and early two thousand and nineteen in establishing a quorum for meetings. So we had a, a number of times where uh there were meetings that were going to be scheduled but had to be canceled. Because we didn't have a quorum established, so we really couldn't conduct any business. Um and then subsequently with COVID, uh that obviously kind of, you know, changed everybody's role. Um so I, I can't really give you a good explanation as to why, what, why it is that the council hasn't met. But I, I think I agree with um, you know, the, the discussion I've heard. You know, and obviously Mr. Rice would be in a better position than I. That, you know, perhaps the, the mission of the council needs to be reconstituted somewhat based upon the, the legal realities of the situation. Um and, and what we can and cannot do and act upon. Um and, you know, I, you know, depending upon how that comes about, I'd still be willing to be involved in, in, in some way, shape or form. I, I disagree respectfully uh with my colleague on the council, uh Ms. Mucasi, to extent that. I don't think that you as commissioners have been lacking input from us. Because I think our, the input that we would have provided has been uh provided by, you know, outside counsel and others who have the expertise. So I think it's been more of a matter of substitution, not a matter of being deprived of the information needed from, from us as a council. Um so, you know, I don't want to go on too long, but I think that, that's kind of what I have to say. I um, I would be interested in getting, remaining involved in the council going forward if, in fact, we do have. A substantive sort of meaningful purpose and role. Um I don't think that I would, you know, I personally, I can't speak for others, but I personally would want to be involved if it was strictly. Some sort of marketing communications committee or something like that, that I, I don't see myself participating in that. But um, um, you know, I, I, I think that it is important for you as commissioners to kind of consider the role. And, and amend the legislation as necessary based upon the outside advice of outside counsel. And hopefully uh we as a council will have a role to play uh moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, any additional public comment?
John, we had the uh letter from John Ratchudy, I, I see his name, I don't know if he's on. But um would you uh kindly read that letter, that's, that's his public input?
So we're not reading emails, we're accepting people who are in person. Um he's not missing anything today, we're gonna be giving another opportunity for feedback on this. Because we're gonna have an ordinance, I think that we're gonna revise the existing ordinance with. And he can at that point give comment unless he is on.
No, he's, yeah, he's on, I see him right now.
Okay, that guy's saying, I'm gonna ask him to unmute.
There he is.
Hello? I'm here.
You're, you're on, John.
I don't have the letter in front of me, I'm sorry. Wait, hold on, I'll get my partner to look it up for you.
You can just tell us whatever you want to tell us.
No, I'd rather, I would much rather read you the letter. I took the time to write it. So if you can just bear with me. Are you there?
Yeah, we're here.
Okay, um it, it, I, I referenced that quickly that Lisa said that the meeting was, the name was not about. Radner Studio twenty-one, and there's an issue with MLTV as well. But I urge the Board of Commissioners and the CCC. To take a hard look at how peg money is being used at Radner Studio twenty-one. My question is why are Radnor and Lower Merion residents' peg, peg monies being used to fund non-resident programming? As I have pointed out in the past, and I pointed out just, I don't know what my status is on the board, I can only imagine. The GM is inviting non, non-residents as hosts to provo, provide, produce shows. Who then put their programming on their websites to either advertise their company or their cause or their product and profit and gain. I, I, I did my research on this and I know it goes on. The Radner Studio twenty-one bylaws are clear about this and have, we have legal precedent prohibiting it. Rich Booker, you may recall the, the Christopher Eggly case, which ended up in a federal court. Radner Studio twenty-one is walking down the same path with non-residents and Radnor Lower Mer, as a, as Radnor Lower Merion residents, this is concerning. There are a number of other issues I would urge the BOC and CCC to examine. Most notably removing Radnor's, removing the Radnor Studio twenty-one board itself. And by that I mean that the township should take over the station, appoint a new board. And one member who resigned is well-known to many of you. Has called the board dysfunctional, not my word, theirs. Radner Studio twenty-one does not produce quality content to justify the eighty thousand dollar a year salary that the GM makes. And how does he support a sour at the station raising money? He doesn't. What the current general manager currently producing could easily be done by a Radnor Middle School student. It's embarrassing. Radner Studio has been described as unwatchable. And when I'm in, in Wayne, I've had people come up to me and point this out to me. I, I, I don't have a direct affiliation as I once did, so I have no response to that. The GM uses the channel to espouse his biased political views. That's not what the purpose of that is. Worst of all, Radner Studio twenty-one, because it is unimaginative, old, and produces no quality content. And has no viewers, no followers, no brand, no sponsors. And these are the key elements of fundraising. And ask me how I know, because we produced three documentaries in the last three years and raised considerable money to do it. And most recently, because I am outspoken about the mismanagement of the channel and the board chair. My several requests to Vince Kelly to interview Radnor residents who have approached me about interviewing him on the channel. I have, I've sent Vince Kelly three emails to which he ignores. Giving me access to the channel. I, I will say this firmly, if Vince Kelly continues to do so, I will sue him, much like Christopher Eggly did. Sue the channel. I am not speaking just to some guy with an axe to grind. Our voices are coming from a team that has successfully produced an Emmy, two Emmy nominations, six Kelly Awards and national recognition for our works. I, I personally, as a Radnor resident, have a passion for Radner Studio twenty-one. I was the GM there at one time on an interim basis. And I know what it takes to make the, the operation a, a well-respected one. Radner Studio twenty-one has an opportunity to be Philly Cam mainline if it's properly run. My partner and I, Jill Freshy, are open to any questions or discussions the BOC or the CCC may wish to have. At any time regarding the success of our public access station. And lastly, and I have said this previously to some, to some, several of you board members. I would manage the station for free to watch it succeed. And therefore use the peg monies that we could produce quality-driven, educational, informative, entertaining documentaries. There are plenty of them in Radnor and Lower Merion to produce. Thank you very much, and I respectfully submit that, John Ratchudy, documentarian.
Thank you, John. The, the, the Rich Booker show is pretty good, though, on that channel, so.
You mean it was?
Is there any additional public comment?
Yeah.
I, I have to say, I love that. I love everything he said. That's what we need.
I apologize, Ms. Margolis, I, I don't want to cut you off, we do just one per item. So you know additional public comment? Okay, we will move to the consent agenda. Is there any item that a commissioner would like to pull off of the consent agenda?
Yeah, I would like to pull the, the minutes off at the, I don't know what, what is that? Does my um screen is now blank?
Looks like two B.
Give me one sec. It would be too big, yes.
Hey, are there any other items that commissioners would like to pull? Hearing none, let's start with two B, I will move for two B, is there a second? Okay, Sean?
Thank you.
On two B?
Yeah, so um I, I don't know if it's a typo or not, or you said that um. When we voted for Damian Commissioner Engle's resignation, it was five one. I, and I was the one that voted against it, I did not vote against it. I may have had a delay in my hand, so I would just like the record to accurately state that. Um I did email you, Bill, if you recall, as well as Peggy to uh change that. So um I would just like those uh minutes to reflect that, that's all.
Got it, I've got no problem with that. Um I guess I'll move to amend the minutes to reflect Commissioner Farh's clarification, is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Is there any further comment on the amended minutes? Hearing none, I'll move to pass the minutes as amended, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, nay, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the balance of consent agenda, items A and C through I, I will move for their passage, is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Items to A and C through I pass unanimously. Moving on to item three B, accessibility presentation, Ms. Monti. Am I pronouncing that correctly, I apologize.
Hi, is that me?
That is you, you're up.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Leah.
Uh my name's Leah Monti, and I'm currently a senior at Radnor High School. And today I'm here to just give like a very brief just overview. I did a project last summer with the League of Women Voters of Radnor Township. About um accessibility and the Americans with Disabilities Act and its relationship to um Radnor Township. I'm not gonna bore you with my very long presentation, but I'll just go over briefly. I basically did some overall history of the um ADA and then looked specifically at Title III, which is public accommodation. Um so I basically went around to different locations at Radnor, specifically the schools, the library, the post office, those kind of buildings. And assessed their um, like their entrances and stuff like that, parking. And I came up with some more concrete recommendations about it. But overall, I'd just like to say that I think Radnor's done a great job with following the ADA compliance in terms of like construction and those type of buildings. And I would just um, I would like to say, just like, we should take that a step further. Kind of keep these individuals um needs in mind, um be open to their thoughts, whether that be through. Some kind of event or um committee or meeting or something. Just kind of go the extra step to um make them feel welcome in this community, in our community. And um much like the work being done currently at the high school, which I think is great with renovating the fields. Kind of taking that extra step to think, is every building, is every place in Radnor accessible? And can we make it better? So yeah.
So Leah, was there anything in your study, you mentioned that there, you, you looked at a lot of different areas of the township. Is there anything in your study that you felt maybe could have been done a little bit better or?
Um like overall, there were very specific ones I had, just kind of like, like, do you want the specifics, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, so just everyone knows, and I know Maura is well aware of Leah's uh presentation that she gave to the Board of Health. She gave a, a pretty extensive presentation and she and I talked um as we were leading into the, the. Doing a designated accessibility uh seat on the planning commission. And I asked her if she could provide some of the information that she gathered. But I told her she had to put it in five minutes, so I think she, I don't want you to feel like you can't speak. So you do have a, a little bit of time, so please share.
Thank you, and I'm sorry.
No worries, um so I guess like more of like my specifics, I guess, for what Radnor is. It's just like, I went around and like, overall, I think handicap parking is good, but we just need to like, be more mindful. Just like, are they visible, are they easy to find? Um like just kind of thinking about like getting in and out of spots, like specifically at Sopezo Gym. I know there's like the spot weirdly near like a bush on a curb, just kind of thinking like that. Um and the other big thing I was like ramps, that I know the administration building near the middle school has a very weird ramp at the back of the building. Is that what you're kind of asking about, Mrs. Roski, those specifics? Um yeah, just having hand rails, having it be easy to get around the building, I know you go in the back. So it's kind of disorienting to come in while most people are coming in through the front. Um that was really it about the specifics. I think, like I said earlier, like I was very pleasantly surprised by um how well Radnor is doing in terms of the ADA. So I think just taking the extra step and going more to a community approach. And just um making sure their voices are heard and their needs are met would be the extra step to make Radnor better.
Thanks, Leah.
No problem.
Very much.
Let me know if you have any questions or if you'd like to see my presentation, I'd be happy to send it to anyone.
I would like that, if you could send that to the board, that, we would be grateful.
Alright, perfect, will do. Thank you again.
Leah, real, real quick, if you could actually, uh maybe um, Bill, if you wouldn't have a problem, if you did something. Where you could put, where we could uh post it to the website or to our channel, I think that would be a, a help. I know, I know that you've. I know, I know that you probably did it when you were at the Board of Health, but, um, if you do, do it again, I think that, that'd be important.
Yeah, I can send like a pre, the presentation or what would you like?
Yeah, the presentation. Maybe we could put that up on the website.
Oh, perfect. Well done. Thank you so much.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you for your work, Leah.
No problem.
So moving to item three C, designated accessibility seat on the planning commission. I think Commissioner Baroski, this is you.
So I think I've mentioned, uh, several times, and so I'll be brief. You know, I have been meeting with some residents with the, who came forward with the idea of, uh, putting together an accessibility committee for the, uh, for the township. And I think that given the advisory boards that we do have, uh, the, the bandwidth of staff to be able to, manage and again, um, find meaningful work for these volunteer residents to do. I, I think that adding out a full committee might be a little more than is needed. And as Leah mentioned, she feels like we are doing a, a very, you know, a good job. But I think that we've seen, um, in, in some of our other projects where you have the perspective of either someone who is in the field or someone who is, you know, living with someone and, and working with somebody who has, um, a, a special need that you offer a different perspective. And after we spoke about this at our last meeting, I think Bill shared that we do have, currently have an open seat on the planning commission. And I would like to present that we take that seat and designate it for someone who would continue to interact with the planning board as, you know, our, our regular, you know, the other citizens. But somebody who might have, uh, an eye towards accessibility issues. And I think, given what the school district has just embarked on when it comes to accessibility project at the high school and, you know, kind of the way, you know, this is a, a, a higher, you know, awareness. And again, as Leah mentioned, you know, to make sure that everybody feels welcome, included, um, and that everything is available to them. So I think that somebody sitting in the planning commission with an eye toward that, um, might be able to offer some additional perspective. We do do a good job with ADA, but sometimes just doing ADA is not enough. Um, and there are, there are enhancements that we can make in the planning process that, um, will make, again, our community more accessible to everybody. So that's what I put forward out there with regards to that seat and that we would, might reserve it for someone who has, um, is an accessibility, either area, area of expertise or, um, again, and that could be simply as, um, living with and working with somebody who, uh, has a disability.
So I would totally support that. My question to you is, would you like to, uh, prepare or, or ask to have prepared a revised ordinance that would require someone with expertise, experience or training beyond that of a trade, uh, beyond that of a layman in accessibility issues as a member of the commission, or do you just want us to focus on this when we're looking for this particular person now?
I, I bring it to the board for their consideration, you know, for their, for, for your input. Um, I, I'm fine going either way. I, I guess we're doing the ordinance would certainly take a little bit longer if we had to go that route. But, uh, you know, I'm open to the, um, to board discussion on it.
I'd say for now, my vote is we just informally look for someone who has that experience or training and we can ask staff for revised ordinance that would look for that longer term to formalize it going forward.
Yeah, I, I would support this, um, this seat, and I think, Jack, that's a, that's a reasonable, um, way forward. And the only thing that I would add to Leah's presentation and what Commissioner Baroski was saying is that I do think that we, um, build out and renovate, um, really well in compliance with ADA, uh, requirements, but I would be interested in learning about some older buildings that maybe, um, haven't had some renovations because that might be where we're finding some gaps in this type of, um, accessible, accessibility. So I don't know where that fits into this discussion, but I, I, I don't think our new build outs and our new renovations are, are, um, much of the issue, but the remnants of maybe pre-ADA or something that's fallen into disrepair um, might be where we, uh, focus some of our improvement.
I, I, I don't think it's necessary to revise the ordinance to call for a specifics position. We, we determined, based on what I've heard tonight, that there's not a major issue with compliance with ADA. All of the engineers providing plans are very well-versed on ADA requirements, and it's always part of every plan submission. And it seems to be a solution looking for a problem. We don't, we, there's, it's tough to get enough planning commission people as it is, let alone to have this as a special need. So, um, I, I understand, uh, wanting to, to have an emphasis on this issue for the people who it's a ma- major concern to. But I think overall, uh, in the larger scheme of things, it's a, it's a, uh, a, a minor, minor issue that is well addressed with respect to, uh, the plans that are reviewed. So y- you can make a recommendation and you can ask for someone to be on the planning commission, but I wouldn't change the ordinance. I don't think it's worth our time or the time of the solicitor and, and others.
I would actually kind of concur with Rich, not to say that it's not important, but I think it's just one issue in a large, uh, in a large group of issues of what we're looking at when we try to find a qualified candidate to serve on these boards. So when you preclude someone because we're looking for one, um, specific issue, I, I think that's tough. Um, and then as things change and technologies change, um, uh, you know, where does this, where does this eventually, I don't want to say it's a slippery slope, but, um, you, you know, so if we have to have one person that's an expert on this for that, we only have nine seats or eight seats. I think this would also make the board an even number, if I'm correct. Is that correct? It would be an even number instead of an odd number. Still be an odd, it'd be an odd number still?
It'd still be nine numbers.
There's an empty seat.
Okay.
We're talking about.
There's an empty seat, so, um, so I, I, I think that we should, um, ask questions, um, when maybe we're looking to, uh, appoint people, this should definitely be on there with maybe a list of other questions, uh, to see if they're qualified, but, to make it this person's sole position and then if they, you know, it's not for them, but they still stay on the board, I, I don't know. I think it's important, um, but getting back to Commissioner Booker, what he said. Yeah, um, all this stuff is addressed, uh, when, when we do development plans. You know, uh, and then, for instance, uh, like in my ward, um, we haven't, we have a bunch of ADA problems, specifically at that underpass, where you can't really put a stroll, you can't, you can't put a stroller there, uh, not less a wheelchair. And I get comments all the time from residents, why isn't it ADA compliant? And I just think that, uh, um, and it's not because it's, I don't know, Pendott or Picos or whoever's, uh, who, who's ever underpass that it is, um, and it just puts township, uh, I feel that it puts township in a, in a difficult position. But definitely when we, uh, go through these resumes, I definitely think that it's a great question to ask and we should have somebody that has that experience. But to change, uh, the ordinance specifically for that, uh, I, I think that's going to be a tough call.
Okay. Well, uh, we're not taking any action on this, but I'm going to suggest, Lisa, if this is an issue that you want to run with, why don't you continue to work with staff if you'd be willing to do so? We can either continue looking for a planning, well, we must continue looking for a planning, uh, commission applicant. I think we're all on board with looking for someone who has some particular expertise. If you have the appetite to draft something or work with staff to draft something, I certainly would be interested in that. And I hear some others as well, and we can then bring it to the board and we'll see how it fares. Thank you very much.
I think it's just a matter of, you know, Sean, to your point, I think it's a matter of somebody while we are looking at ADA compliance, you know, and I will go back to the North Wayne. Um, when we were restriping the parking there, we were going to put in the required ADA parking. But when, uh, a resident who has a very personal and, um, you know, i- interest in this, um, came forward and said, hey, that's great, you're putting it where you're putting it, but it would be better to put it where it's currently located, close to the crosswalks, closer to the stores, closer to the restaurants. Um, we made that change and I think that that is, uh, something that, you know, I never would have thought of while we're ADA compliant. It isn't as, um, perhaps accommodating as it could be, so. But I'm glad to work on something and bring it forward for the, for board to consider. Thanks, Jack.
Can I, sure. Can I just touch on, uh, Commissioner Baroski's comment? Now, I, 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 I agree, and I think that's why, um, all these meetings should be open and we should definitely, uh, uh, more than entertain anyone's feedback. Um, and the more we advertise these meetings and get public involvement, the more we learn. So, uh, I agree in that respect.
Okay. We've gone to item three D, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash forty-eight, Morris Road Streetscape Project Payment of Change Order Number Three for additional paving required at existing driveways and tree removal in the amount of eleven thousand three hundred ninety dollars. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Steve Norcini, I assume this is you?
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you, Commissioner. So just for, uh, everybody, the commissioners to know, the Morris Road Streetscape Project is complete. Uh, I know I'm biased, but I think it looks very nice and it came out well, and I know the residents of the street are, uh, very happy about it. So during construction, we encountered a couple of things. When the drive, when the new sidewalks and aprons were put in, we had to do some driveway adjustments more than originally anticipated, which is pretty common in construction. And there was also one tree, uh, although not on the sidewalk, was a problem for the project in the way it leaned over and that was removed. So the cost of that work was eleven thousand three hundred ninety dollars. Uh, the project came in, uh, under budget, as you can see. Five hundred fifty thousand dollars was budgeted for the project. It was awarded to five oh nine. We had eighty-two thousand five hundred for contingency. And we have not, uh, spent anywhere near that. So I respectfully request the commissioner's authorized payment of change order three for the additional paving and at the driveways and tree removal in the amount of eleven hun- eleven thousand three hundred ninety dollars.
Sorry, Commissioner, comment?
Yeah, um, so the, the money that was saved, what is, because this was a bond issue, where does that? Is part of that bond refunded? Does it go to another project, a rainy day fund? Where does that money go?
So it's in the bond. I'm, I'm not going to speak for Mr. White, but that goes in the bond. So that money wasn't spent and, uh, as the commissioners can move projects or approve projects from the bond. But we've also had projects that have gone over. I can't think of any, uh, right off the bat, so I couldn't tell you the bond fund balance.
And then just one more question. When we do, uh, or when you, we do these projects and you deal with certain companies, do you find that some go more under budget or over budget? Some companies go more under budget or over budget than others, or is it just kind of a, the project is a project?
So it's, it's by project, Commissioner, so when it comes, when a company bids a project, they may be low on one, but their, uh, workload is greater on another one. So they're not as anxious to low bid to get, to get it, and they may bid it a little higher. There's probably a dozen things that go into the making of the bid, so I, I don't know of any that are always low or always high. It, it does seem to fluctuate.
Steve, if I could just add to that, it seems that anytime we're going in the ground, um, there's more opportunity for change orders.
Mr. White is correct because there are, there are a lot of unknowns when you build a new building. Uh, not that there's not change orders, but if you starts from, start from scratch, you have better control. Uh, under the ground, we don't know if there's utility. We found it with the tap trail. We found the pipes that no longer are in use. Uh, you'll see in a minute unsuitable soil, so that, um, the township manager is correct. The opportunity, I think, is greater in civil site work for change orders.
And then just circling back, I understand there was a question about the excess bond money. I, I'd be happy to touch on that real quickly. What, what happens is, is if, uh, at the end of all of the projects, uh, if there are excess funds remaining from the borrowing, uh, the board has discretion to allocate those to, uh, as you see fit. So it, it's usually something that's done at the end, just in case you do have projects that, you know, hit multiple snags or have cost overruns. Uh, they can help balance each other out. Uh, but at the, uh, at the end, if there is, uh, you know, a net savings on all the projects, uh, then the board has authority to allocate, uh, again, as you see fit. As long as it's consistent with capital projects, so, but we, we wouldn't want to use it for operations, but it, if it's consistent with the purpose of the bond, so in this case, pretty much any capital project, then you can, um, award it to whatever project you guys vote for. Great. Is there any additional staff comment? Well, is there additional commissioner comment first? Hearing none, is there any additional staff comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item three E, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash fifty-four, Radnor Tap Trail Payment of Change Order Number Seven, which is required to mitigate unsuitable soils encountered in the project area. The cost of change order number seven will be determined as an engineering solution is still being designed. Prior to the board vote on Monday, an amount for change order number seven will be presented. Steve, your microphone is on mute.
So we do have, uh, I have the numbers now, so let me see if I, apparently not. Ian, would you pull them up?
Just once, I'd love to see you share your screen successfully. That's going to be our last meeting remote.
Yep. Not getting it.
Uh, yeah.
He's done it. I saw him do it.
It comes in better, yeah.
There it is.
Thank you. Bob Tate with muting and me with screen shares.
One time I saw Bigfoot.
I think I pulled up my dog a couple of times to leave on my screen. So we, we did, uh, I, I want to thank the township manager for letting me have this on the agenda to keep the project moving because we did not have the price at the time, uh, when we came to the board, all the items came to the board. So what we've encountered is, uh, once again, unsuitable soil on the trail, and this particular leg is from the intersection of Radnor Chester and Lancaster Avenue uh, up towards what is now a construction entrance for the high school uh, accessibility and wellness project, but it's how you get to the back of the fields and how they used to do the fireworks back there. So what we have, Ian, if you could scroll down just a tad, a little bit more to the first table. Uh, so that is the cost of the change order. So there's, what we have to do is bring in select borrow, which is stone, that's the two A. The soil that was supposed to be used from the basins for the tap trail is unsuitable, so that gets carted away. Uh, we install a geo-textile, we install a larger, bony or surface underneath the number three stone. And then there is a credit on some of the excavation since we're doing the import. So the net, uh, cost is actually thirty thousand eight dollars and ninety cents. I'm requesting, uh, not to exceed of thirty-one thousand in case some of the quantities, as Mr. White noted. When we're in the field, these things can change slightly, so that's why I rounded up. If you could go to the next page, either the next table. So this is the change order log that we've been through. So as you can see, number seven is the one that's before you tonight. Total change orders to date, including number seven, is sixty-two, the co- the total is sixty-two thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars. Uh, the contingency budgeted was two hundred and eighty thousand, so our contingency balance is two hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars. So we're well within that. So we're well within that. One last table, Ian, if you don't mind. So the total project costs are laid out here. And really, the, the purpose of this is to just show you that we are still within budget for the project. We have one more section of trail that we could or could not encounter. Issues with unsuitable soil or some other item. That would be the leg from that entrance I noted. Up to King of Prussia Road. Past the field, Eric, the corner of Lancaster and King of Prussia. I won't know until a little later this week where we stand on that. I'm hoping all is well, but. To date, we've had issues in that one stretch. So in the long run, to cut to the chase, I just request that the board would please approve. And not to exceed amount of thirty one thousand dollars for change order seven to address unsuitable soils at the Radnor Tap Trail.
So Steve, I have two questions for you, one of which is performative, and you can probably anticipate the other, which is substantive. First off, and here's a performative one, is any of this anywhere near Lenore Avenue?
No, sir.
Excellent, thank you. The second, and, and this is the real one. It looks like we've got two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars plus in the contingency balance. This is the, I, I want to say second time that we have had to increase. The amount that we're spending on the tap trail. I know you have gotten that ahead of us, ahead of me. You've answered a lot of my questions on this. In advance with this particular table, which I'm grateful for. What is your anticipation of a realistic overage that we'll see on the balance of the top trail going forward?
So Commissioner, again, I think our greatest exposure to any more change orders is going to be this final leg. That's, we haven't excavated fully yet, which is from that entrance. It takes you to the accessibility wellness area up to the corner of Creek Field at the intersection of Lancaster and Prussia. I, I can't see underground. I, we are looking for this, any issues daily. As of right now, we are okay. So I don't, with, with a two hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred eighty five dollar contingency balance. I don't anticipate anything that would take up that balance. So the magnitude of the change orders have been in the, as you can see, thirty one thousand dollars, thirty six thousand dollars. Now that by no means is a, a gauge for future change orders, but. Looking at the length of the, the trail that's left, if we were to encounter unsuitable soils. I am very confident that the budgeted contingency would more than cover. So I, I, at this rate, at this late stage in the project, because we are probably about a month away from. Completion, except for the tree planting, I, I think we will come in within what was budgeted here. Understanding that the two hundred and eighty thousand dollars is part of the budget, the contingency is part of the budget.
Right. So if we vote for this, we're still within budget and we anticipate that we will stay within budget to completion, understanding that nothing is guaranteed.
Correct on all three, Commissioner.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Steve, is the area of unsuitable soils. Alongside Lancaster Avenue between. King of Prussia Road and Radnor Chester Road?
Right now, what we've encountered, if, if you're familiar with what is now the construction entrance. For the, the school district project as well as the, it's the entrance, the unofficial entrance off of Lancaster Avenue. To get back to the back of the school. That's where the fireworks access was. That's where the E and Ts go in for the games.
Right.
So it's from that point west to Radnor Chester. That was a pretty low lying area, a pretty heavily wooded area, so there were some soils. So this is not surprising. I didn't, I was hoping we didn't, we wouldn't encounter this. And actually, the school district is in the midst of, of excavating their stormwater management system under the field. And the contractor did have the ability to take some soil from them, and they did. Use some of their soil, but at one point, that soil became too moist to use on our project. Had it been in better shape, we might have been able to use more of it, but that just didn't work out.
So the, the area there is very low. Right now, at least, I guess, because a lot of it's been removed relative to the finished elevation of Lancaster Avenue. How much lower will the finished elevation of the trail be? Than the finished elevation of Lancaster Avenue? Are they the same substantially lower? And it looks like there's several feet if you're going to come up to anywhere close to Lancaster Avenue.
So it won't, Commissioner, I apologize, I don't have the plans here, but it doesn't come up anywhere near Lancaster Avenue, so it's. I mean, it, it fluctuates as you move east, but it's a few feet below Lancaster Avenue.
The area right now, you got a couple of feet you're putting in, in that area. Is that kind of the amount of new soil, the new borrow to put in there, or is it, is it more than that?
So what we would do is, we're not, the contractor is not quite, quite at subgrade. Subgrade is the, when you excavate for the trail, that's the, the grade of the dirt below the stone and the asphalt. So they're going to excavate the subgrade. There's a three hundred and seventy five foot stretch that, that I noted. Where there are pockets of really bad soil. They will undercut those areas a foot. We'll install the geo textile and the. Number three stone, and then we will come up with that two A stone that we're talking about, but. Again, without the plans in front of me, but we're, we are not at. The Lancaster Pike elevation in that area. We are definitely below that.
Okay. What, are there any, besides the geo textile fabric? Aren't you afraid of water pounding there and, and causing issues in the future, or do you think you need anything else besides? The, the new stone? That need to be taken to convey water from, from that area, which could, could pool or pond in the future?
That's a good question, but there are several, I believe there's four stormwater management basins. From Radnor Chester and Lancaster all the way up to Creek Field. They're there to address the new impervious, but they're also there to help with drainage. So there is drainage set up to be in there so that we don't have that bonding situation that you noted.
Okay, and there was a lot of trees taken out from there. A lot of people noticed on the trees that are taken out. Did they take out extra trees because of the bad soils, or was it just what, what was marked?
That was just what was marked. So first, I would like to direct everybody to our website. And our Public Information Officer Molly Gallagher put together a great page for us with the information that we provided. That outlines the number of trees removed, the number of trees to be installed. So the number of trees removed to date. Was what the Shade Tree Commission approved on the plan, which was what the Radnor Township School District approved. So what was removed was all slated for removal. From the start.
Okay, and I'd encourage you to keep working on that area four seventy six, that it was, all the trees were removed. There's yellow flowers growing now, but still needs, still needs to look much better. That, that area still is not up to snuff. I would support spending more money to make that look nicer, because two biggest complaints. Are the, the one area there, the trees taken out for the top trail in that area on the right side of Lancaster Avenue going west and the. I four seventy six Penn Dot Easement area that was, trees were removed from two years ago, so. You know, there's not enough we can do to make that look nice, so anything. Keep, keep working on it and, and whatever you need there, I will be supportive of it. Because it's a major complaint area.
The plan that was brought forth by the Shade Tree Commission and was ultimately approved by this board, I did call the contractor Weeds Inc. So a mixture of meadow grasses and wildflower were planted there last year. And I had the same concern as did the manager, so I called them and I was told we should see germination in May-June. Seeing that it's May tenth, I guess it's going to be a little closer to June, but. That's, that's where we stand. So that was the approved plan. I'm hoping this all germinates as, as. What the plan noted and what our contractor has said.
And Steve, aren't there about three hundred new trees to go in over at the tap trail?
Thank you, Commissioner. I was going to get to that. They are, we are planting about three hundred trees. There's dozens of shrubbery. There is a cutoff date, so I'll let everybody know. If, so this is really a Penn Dot project that we're the, the owner of. So if the trees can't be planted by May fifteenth, they must wait until September fifteenth. And that's for the health of the trees, so they don't go through a long, dry summer. So you'll see some trees planted this spring. But the contract will remain open, even though all the work will get done until May fifteenth. When the contractor can come back and plant the hundreds of trees and shrubs that are required.
You mean the fall, Steve?
Yes, I'm sorry, September fifteenth, the fall, yes.
And they will be back, right?
Yes, we have performance payment maintenance bonds. We have, we're covered, and we have the weight of Penn Dot behind us.
Can I just ask on that weight of Penn Dot, if we're talking about the tap trail still? So I walked the new part over off Bryn Mawr Avenue, which is certainly very nice, that paved, the paved part. Are they coming back there? There's still like a box with some trash and, you know, plastic, those plastic cones and stuff over there.
They're going to have to grade along the sides and put topsoil. That hasn't been done yet, so that, I mean, that portion really isn't completed. Also, with our easement agreement with the Cornerstone Homeowners Association, there's a fence. To go in that pretty much runs the majority of the trail up to near the bridge, the new bridge that's in. And then there's some trees which. Show on the plan being planted near the trail, but there's a lot of wetlands there, and there's actually a lot of green growth. So we've already reached out to the, the Cornerstone HOA. And offered to plant those same trees somewhere up near that basin or along Bryn Mawr Avenue, and they seem open to that. But so just what, what you saw was not the finished product yet. It'll be finished.
It looks really nice, though. But is there so far?
Yes, it's coming out well.
Steve, I know the, the, the work on this that we're talking about tonight doesn't have anything to do with the, the proposed ramp across the preserve. As Jack was mentioning by Lenore, but there is work going on in that area, and it's generated some concern by neighbors. I, I feel it a few calls today. So can you just be on record, and we've talked about this in the past, what exactly they're doing there? They've clear cut some of the area, and I believe it's stormwater related.
Yes, Commissioner, so way back. We omitted the trail that runs through the West Wayne Preserve and, and. And the portion that would come down Conestoga to Lenore and crossover, that was all eliminated. What we could not eliminate, as, as you noted, we recall from our, recall from our conversations, was the stormwater management portion that took place there. That stormwater management is actually to offset other impervious surfaces on the, on the project. So not to confuse things. Obviously, Commissioner Abel's fully aware, we're working on a, a much larger stormwater management project for West Wayne Preserve. So my goal was to actually eliminate this little portion of the Penn Dot project and include it in our. West Wayne Preserve project, but we were unable to do that based on our NPDES permits, the two different permits. So in that area you spoke of, there was brush removed, small saplings. But I believe there was only really two trees of size that were removed, and that was all part of the project. So what will be in there is a, a small stormwater management system. It will then be seeded and hay mulched, and I believe that gets some plantings too, but just so everybody understands, there is no trail. That goes through the West Wayne Preserve. I want to make sure everybody, anybody listening, or if any commissioner. First off, if you get a question, by all means, send them over to me. But if you wish to answer, there is no trail that goes through the West Wayne Preserve.
Thanks, Steve. Is there any additional commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment?
Yeah, just, just real quickly, if I could, what, what you guys don't see, and this, this probably won't come as, as a surprise. But there are a number of change orders requested by the contractors, pretty much on a daily basis. That Steve Norcini is out there and has successfully argued away. So we're required to bring these to you when they cost a certain amount, and when there's, there's a financial transaction involved. But, but please know at the same time that. Steve has argued away a number of attempted change orders. And again, that should come as no surprise, but it's, it's a compliment to Steve, especially with this tap trail, which has become an everyday. Project management situation, so just a compliment to Steve.
Awesome, thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item three F. Ordinance number twenty twenty one, adoption, menning the Radnor Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter sixty two, pensions and annuities. I apologize, before I keep going, did this get pulled?
Yes.
Okay, this item has been pulled. Moving on to reports of standing committees, item four. Hearing none, moving to new business, item A, volunteer tax credit. Commissioner Brasky, you are up.
So yeah, just quickly, this is something that, we had talked about this a number of years ago. It might predate Maura on the board. But it was something we had brought up, we had talked about. I know that Commissioner Nagel was still on the board at the time. And we never really took it anywhere. I've had several of the Radnor Fire approach me about this and ask about it. As well as some residents who volunteer for other. Fire departments in other municipalities but live in Radnor. So, and I know that former Commissioner Enderly was working this and had brought forward some ideas. I believe to the solicitor and to the, to Mr. White. So I just wanted to put this on here to see if this was something that the board had an appetite to pursue. There are other municipalities that do this. La Rmerian, for one, does offer a volunteer tax credit for. Those volunteering in first responder positions, and I think we all know, certainly the township. We know, because we've funded it, that there is a, a lack of volunteers coming forward. For our fire and EMT positions and that the need to. Continue to recruit and find representatives. Or find individuals who are willing to volunteer in that capacity is, is always a great need. And if there's some way to incentivize in a small way. Residents to volunteer. And I guess, I, I mean, and I guess we can decide if we want to give a credit to those that are volunteering outside the township but live in the township. I'm not exactly sure of the intricacies of all of it. If, if that is something that we can consider, and I, I think it, I think it bears discussion. And especially as we continue to look at, you know, increased need. And how that is then also, you know, a, a financial impact. So I throw that out there. I don't know if Mr. Rice or Mr. White, you guys have anything to add on this? I know you've had some kind of conversations with former Commissioner Enderly.
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in and then hand it off to, to Solicitor Rice. Yeah, this has come, as you pointed out, Commissioner Brasky, it's come up several times through the years. I think Commissioner Abel brought it up as well, as did Commissioner Enderly. The, it, the last time this came up, some concerns are not concerns, but. Talking about the, the nuance, one of the issues that we wanted to try to overcome is that. The volunteer tax credit would only apply to those who volunteer and live in Radnor. Which would exclude any of the Radnor Fire Company volunteers who live in other municipalities that, that don't have their own credit. Now, if they're all adopting the credit, that may be a moot point at this, now, but. So we, we talked. we talked, or we transitioned, or wanted to have a discussion about some sort of stipend. Uh, I had several conversations with, uh, the leadership at Radnor Fire. That didn't seem to get a whole lot of traction. So, uh, it, it could be that the, the volunteer, uh, firefighter tax credit is the best next step to take, uh, if we're trying to, uh, develop an incentive for volunteers to, to step up. And then John had come up, or the state has a, a, a pretty well-defined handbook on how this works. Um, there's some due diligence we would want, we would need to pull together uh, on membership, uh, you know, financial impact and, and the like. Uh, and so that's something John and I could work on, um, and then present it back to the board. John, I don't know if there's, there's more you want to add?
Just a couple things. The, the, uh, uh, this is Act one seventy-two of two thousand sixteen. You can, townships have the ability to, uh, provide a, um, credit for earned income tax, which you do not have, uh, and town, and/or township real estate taxes. You could do both. So you're only talking about your township real estate taxes as a credit. And, uh, I think there's some baseline criteria, a hundred hours, volunteers not compensated otherwise to be a volunteer, uh, that's wrapped into the act. Um, I know a couple municipalities that we represent have looked at this, and, um, you're only dealing, you can only give the credit to someone who's a resident paying Radnor Township real estate taxes. So if you have volunteers that live in Lower Marion for different, and they're running with the Radnor Fire Company, um, or emergency medical service agencies, because you could do it for both. Um, this doesn't do that individual, uh, any good in terms of a credit. So, so there's some limitations depending on the membership. Some municipalities have just gone to a stipend program, you know, take the credit, um, and, you know, calculate what that would be, and there's just a stipend program, so you're not dealing with keeping track of, uh, because there is some bookkeeping involved, uh, in this, but and other municipalities have implemented this, have implemented both the earned income tax and the real estate tax. Um, so it's only, uh, for residents of Radnor Township, but wouldn't be for any other resident. I think there's a hundred hours of activities, uh, volunteer work that has to be, uh, put into it. So it's, I don't know what the fire companies uh, ask is on this, or they, they're, I guess they're interested in real estate tax credit. You would have to do an ordinance in order to implement it. Um, and I think really the first step would be, if the board wants to move forward, is to get all the, uh, uh, the leaders in for the fire company and, and, and sort out, how many people are we talking about? How many are residents and how many are non-residents? So it's clear that that's the only benefit there is for residents that are in the volunteer service.
Is there appetite on the board to do that? I mean, I, I think it's something that's worth having the conversations with, uh, RFC and, um...
Yeah, absolutely. I would. We spend a lot of money on the fire company every year, and they keep telling us that the reason why is because they just can't volun- get, they can't get volunteers. I would be very interested in basically anything that would help them get volunteers to defray that cost.
Um, I have a couple questions. Um, how would this affect if, um, uh, say it's a child, eighteen-year-old, nineteen-year-old, don't want to say kid, but kid who lives at his home, he's not on the mortgage or the deed, uh, to the house. Uh, but the parents aren't firefighters. Would that apply to their tax credit?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so, okay. So in, in light of that, could they, could we do something like a stipend for them or not?
I mean, the, the, the township could do some combination of, of both. This program, um, as I said, some municipalities have implemented, and I guess it's working okay, and others have looked at it and thought it was much easier just to do a direct stipend.
Okay. And would this, and this would apply if you do say a hundred hours at not only Radnor, but Brumall or Bryn Mawr, is that correct? And you live in Radnor?
I, I believe so. Um, I mean, all these-
They service Radnor.
Yeah, these are details that would have to be worked out in a, in a program and in ordinance.
Okay, um, yeah, I, I, I'm not only for, um, an incentive to, to get, um, more firefighters, um, for rewarding the ones that are, uh, risking their lives and their family time to keep us safe. So, uh, it's a shame that it's got to be in, in incentive form, but I think this is great. Um, Commissioner Borowski, that you're bringing this back, and it's something that, um, uh, I'm happy to-
So, I can't tell where the board is on a stipend or a real estate tax credit. So what, what is on the table right now?
Can I make a suggestion just on that issue? Because I think this, you know, what is necessary here is that the, the criteria for the tax credit, if it's going to be a tax credit, has to be pursuant to, uh, service credit criteria established by the municipality in consultation with the fire chief. So there's got to be a meeting of minds, I think, with the, with the two entities. Um, my understanding is that Radnor Fire has been asking for a real estate tax credit.
Well, because of the multiple, um, difficulties and circumstances and the work necessary to offset certain taxes and to verify, I think that a stipend would be a much easier way to go. So uh, Catherine, I think, is on the, uh, this call. Maybe she can, she could talk, but this, this, um, and, and Bill, to do a tax credit for these people is going to be a lot of work for a very few numbers of taxpayers. And there's a lot of people that are going to be left out. So my view would be a stipend would be a better way, and I think Jake had also talked about uh, scholarships to Villanova, et cetera, as well. So, um, direct payments, I think, is a much easier way to go administratively than a tax credit. So I, I would prefer a stipend, uh, if you're going to consider anything. I think it's easier to implement and cleaner.
I would like to, um, I would like a little bit more information about that. You may be right, Commissioner Booker, but, um, I'd kind of like to see the, the comparison about which is, would provide more benefit to the first responder themselves. Um, to Commissioner Farhi's point that it may not benefit somebody if they're not a homeowner. Um, and that way the stipend would be better, but I, you know, I'd like to play out a couple of those scenarios, um, and not just go in one direction. If we're exploring this, I'd love to get some feedback on both, um, both ways of doing it, but I like the idea of helping the, um, fire department recruit, and, um, we obviously all value the individual firefighters, so, um, this would be a way to show that.
Great. Is there any additional commissioner comment?
So, uh, can I just ask, what would be a realistic timeline for us to say that we might be able to bring something back to discuss? Because I know, like I said, we have discussed this before, and then it kind of falls by the wayside, because there is so much going on, and I totally get that, but what would be a realistic? Um, you know, so I guess we'd have to talk with the fire company, um, get their input, and then bring something back for the board to consider. What do you guys, uh, Bill and, and John, what do you think would be realistic? Like maybe by September, or, because I guess we'd want to know what was happening and how that might impact the budget. I'm sure it can't be a huge budgetary impact, but, um, what do you guys think?
I mean, I, I, I think that by September first, um, easily, uh, I think there's got to, you've got to have the initial meeting with the fire company and administration to, you know, determine how many people are we talking about? Um, how many fire companies are we talking about? Uh, and then what's the service criteria? Because the fire companies may have a different sense of what their members are doing. So, but I think a meeting or two with the fire company over the next couple months, and, um, several municipalities have done ordinances. I'm not going to reinvent the wheel in terms of putting an ordinance together, um, but I think you need to start there. So I'm, Lisa, I would say September first.
Oh, that's undoable?
Absolutely. Yeah. I mean, if, if the fire companies are motivated, um, then that shouldn't be a problem at all.
Sorry, can I just ask one question? Are you done, Commissioner Borowski? Can I interrupt?
No.
Okay. Um, so how much, when, when, um, you give them either a stipend or a discount on their real, their taxes, how much are you looking, what would that be? Or what, John, Lisa, what would that amount typically be?
What was the question?
Well, how much is the rebate are you looking to give a volunteer firefighter?
Um, I am not sure exactly. I haven't looked at the, what the limits are. Um, I think it's up to about twenty percent of the tax liability. You know, but it may be based on, you know, their, their service, the number of calls.
Um, okay.
But, you know, that's, I don't want to throw out any numbers until we meet with them.
Okay. Would that be their total tax bill? Is that including school tax, Radnor tax, and Delaware County tax, or what's the breakdown?
I believe it's just the township tax.
Okay, so it's, so even if they're paying, I, I, I'm just thinking, um, when, you know, if this could be, uh, not worth it, bookkeeping wise, if it's uh, at most, um, you know, on average, maybe four hundred dollars times maybe fifty people, it'd be something like, what, a twenty thousand dollar, uh, um, uh, adjustment to the budget, which would be kind of minor. So I think that you need to weigh in, um, how much, uh, work is going to go into it, changing everything around, but I, 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 I don't know. I think that, um, looking at a stipend or, or discount, either way, it's fine. Just, uh, whatever's easier for us and what they want. That's kind of my question, my thoughts.
It's not substantial, the credit. I mean, I haven't heard any-
Sure, them, maybe a stipend, maybe just as easy, but they should get something back for their serve.
Okay. Is there any additional commissioner comment?
I don't know this.
Not on this?
Hmm.
Okay. Moving on to, uh-
But I just had one more piece of new business. It's really not new business, but I don't know where else to put it. So, uh, first just to recognize that it is, um, Police, uh, Police Week this week, and I just wanted to, um, make a, a quick, um, thank you to, I, I had a family member that experienced a medical emergency about two weeks ago, uh, over on Anki Field, and, uh, officers Vogel, Bates, and, um, Stephanie Ratch, and I always pronounce her name wrong, um, responded, uh, after they were summoned, um, by some of the people that were at the field, uh, with my family member. And then, um, medic Hanken, Hanken and firefighter Woods responded from the EMT. And I, I was not personally there, but everybody that was said that they were absolutely fantastic, and I just, I know that our police and our firefighters probably hear, hopefully, they hear this a lot, um, and a lot of thank yous for their hard work and, and when they are, um, really responsive and do a fantastic job, which they always do, but I just wanted to give them a quick shout out and thank them personally from myself and my family as well.
And I, I was there, and, uh, they did, I, I can attest, they did do a great job, and they were right on the scene.
Well, that was my family member, so I'm really grateful and thankful.
I hope he's doing well.
I had a, an item of new business just came up. Last week, I raised an issue with respect to an executive session item from February eleventh um, of this year that the Board of Commissioners considered and was announced as an executive session item regarding litigation. Uh, there is an upcoming, um, uh, an upcoming, uh, appeal at zoning hearing board that is related to that. I wanted to, uh, have that come before the board, but I don't think now, because no one confirmed John Rice and, and/or Bill, we did, nobody confirmed my question and gave me a response until today. I don't have an opportunity to put that on to the agenda before the next zoning hearing board meeting, so uh, I'm asking John and Jack how you want to address that. Maybe we can consider it right now, whether the board wants to, um, inform zoning hearing of our, uh, action that we took at the executive session or not.
So I, I've got no appetite to inform anyone what we did at executive session, but if we want to, I mean, I guess we can make a motion to that effect, but I'm telling you, I have no appetite to do that. If you'd like to make a motion to send the solicitor to oppose an application of the zoning hearing board meeting, you respect him of what happened in executive session. We can, we can do that now, I guess.
I, I, I wouldn't mind doing it now, but it hasn't been, um, noticed, and I think it should be on an agenda for the public to hear. I think it would be a, it could be a violation because it's unrelated to any item on the agenda, and certainly if, if this was, if there was a response last Wednesday or Thursday, we could have put it on the agenda for tonight, but, um, I don't think it's the right thing to bring it on the agenda right now, personally, unless you disagree, Jack and John, and want to consider it.
Well, John's a solicitor. His opinion matters, not mine. What do you think, John? You're on mute.
Okay. Sorry about that. Um, the board wants to authorize, um, our office to take a position on, we're talking about the PennMed, uh, zoning hearing board application that, uh, was refiled with the zoning hearing board. The, uh, size of the sign now is compliant. Um, the height of the sign is not compliant, so they're looking at relief on the height of the sign. And if you want to take a position to oppose it, um, you know, I think you can bring that up tonight. This is the last meeting before then. You have to be able to transact business. That's important. Um, and it's been on the agenda a couple of times in the past. I don't know, Rich, why you didn't just put it on the agenda tonight. Um, I don't-
Honestly, I, I didn't, I didn't think it would be controversial by, so I, I thought, I, I had no knowledge that you would want me to put it on the agenda for tonight, and I wish we would have discussed it last week.
It's your call. It's your call. I don't get to put things on the agenda. It's your call, and it's not, it wasn't, wasn't put on, so. But to answer the question, I think if you want to entertain a motion to, to send uh, our office to the zoning hearing board, is it, is it next Thursday, Rich?
That's my, that's my recollection.
Okay.
There is another, there's another meeting on May third, uh, but, but I think this is the next, next Thursday. Is it the twentieth?
The twentieth of May, yeah, June third, you mean? Not May third, June third?
June, June third, the next meeting, May twentieth for the next zoning hearing, yes. And that would be before our next meeting, which is the twenty-fourth, as I recall. I don't, I'm not looking at the calendar, just, just going off of memory.
Is this the same thing that we had, didn't we already send John once to oppose this?
And it's, yes, and it's on appeal. They filed, they were denied, and it's on appeal to Delaware County. Um, so they filed a revised application, um, and changed the, the size of the sign. Uh, what was turned down was a larger sign, uh, and a height that's inconsistent with the ordinance. They've appealed that, so they're coming back to the zoning hearing board with a sign that complies with size, but is still too high under the regulations.
And I'm confirming that that is on- And I'm confirming that that is on the Thursday, May 20th zoning hearing board agenda.
Though in light of that, I, I move that we send the, uh, consistent with our prior actions, I move we send the solicitor to oppose that, um, application on the, the 20th. And, um, again, um, I'm raising it now because of, um, the timing.
I'll second. So as I understand, the sign is no longer oversized, but it is over height. Is it fair to say, John, they're basically trying to take advantage of the location to, um, is it Route 20276? What is it?
Blue, blue route. Yeah. Right into, right into blue route. There's a, you know, the parking garage essentially is facing the, the blue route. So they want to hang it there.
Got it.
Um, we're not gonna, so to Rich's point about it not being properly noticed, like it's not, there's not a problem that they don't, aren't able to have their counsel here or anything for us to vote on this.
Well, no, there's not a problem. If the board, if the board wants to take a position, this is your last opportunity. You know, Mr. Falcone, I, I believe is aware that the board may show up and take a position. So he will not be surprised. Um, I actually thought it was going to be on the agenda, uh, as a result of, you know, Richard's questions from last week, but, but it's permissible to vote on this and to authorize us to attend.
Again, consistent with prior actions, I would ask that the board approve sending, uh, John's firm to attend and to, uh, restate our position uh, that, uh, 51 feet is well over the 15 foot height. And, um, moreover, it's, it's not permitted under the rules for the blue root. That's not our rules, but, our rules were specific on this issue of 15 feet and that's, that violates it. So I'd ask the board to, uh, support sending John as requested.
Is there any additional commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? Hearing none. I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item six, old business, sub A deputy treasurer position. So I can get started or Moira, you, you've been taking laboring ore on this. This is your baby.
Um, well, I, uh, this is a continuation from our, um, conversation at our last meeting. Uh, John Rice did give, uh, more information to the board of commissioners and I am still, concerned that the appropriate methods of deputizing were not followed. Um, and so I'd just like to get to the, I just liked it moving forward. I'm, I'm trying to get us in compliance so that moving forward, we don't get in this situation again. So, um, I don't know, Jack, if you want to jump in here, I seem to be bungling it a little bit, but, um, I believe that at our last meeting, we were given some information that was not accurate. Now having reviewed the forms and the process, I think that we are the taxing district who should be the ones approving any of the deputization of a tax collector. So that's my position.
So. Ms. Gartland is on the call, but her video isn't on. So I'm not sure if she's at her computer. Up, there we go. Excellent. Thank you very much. I'm gonna, I'm gonna scare, share my screen at this point. I have what I think may be the form that you were showing us this last week. And I gotta say, I, I'm unhappy by what I have seen here. We last met on April 26th of 2021. And it looks like the bond that was issued in this instance was obtained on April 26, 2021. The signature for Delaware County was obtained on April 26, 2021. The representation, Ms. Gartland, that you made to us was that this was something that had been taken care of months previously.
Right.
Gone back and I've listened to what you had to say and I'll be honest, you did not once say this form was filled out three months previously. You did not specifically say that, that I could catch, but you made it very clear to us in the other statements that you made, that this was something that had been taken care of months previously. And I told you that my concern was, were we bonded or not? And it turns out the answer is at least on the form that I see in front of me, not until the day of the meeting. And that was not something that you shared. So my question to you is why?
Incorrect. That's incorrect. Cause Sarah was the deputy. So you've always been bonded and I am bonded.
Why does the surety company date say April 26, 2021?
That's when they completed it, but I appointed her in March.
Did you go and get this form signed on April 21st, or was this sitting in their desk for long until then?
It was sitting in several positions.
Did you go on April 26th to Patrick Larkin's office to get this signed?
To finish it? Yes.
Okay.
Started it on March and it was approved on March 8th.
By whom?
By the authority.
What authority? There's one signature on March 8th. Do you mean Bill White or manager?
Yes, yes.
You're required by the statute to get signatures from three different taxing districts. One of them is our manager or the township. And I understand that this has been done by the manager of the township for a long time. I frankly don't fault you for making an error that it took our solicitor to correct. My complaint is that this came to us last time we met and you told us that this had been done for months and the answer,
No, I did not.
waved this form in front of us and you said that this has been done for months.
No, that is not true. I always had a deputy.
You told us that this form is what created the deputy. You said the form was the pro, was, was the thing.
That's what I'm.
Jack, I, I think you're, I think you're back in here. When she says months, she worked on it at early, early March and we were in, in April, end of April. It's a couple of months that this, eight weeks or so that this thing's been worked on it. And it's irrelevant anyway. There was always a deputy that was in place. She's bonded. And the, and the, and there was not an issue. Bill was ha, Bill signed off on it. And that there was go, and the surety wasn't going to have an issue with this either.
Rich, you're a lawyer. All right. I think we, she didn't sign this until April 26th. Do you not see a problem with someone who might very well be collecting taxes on behalf of a township, which has revenue in the neighborhood of $36 million not being bonded until April 26th, the day?
I am bonded. I don't see the problem. I am bonded.
I don't see, I don't see an issue at all.
I'm not talking about you, although frankly, I'm going to have questions about your certification going forward. Are you certified as well?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to ask to see your certification. I hope that I'm not sharing it at a public meeting, but frankly, I'd like to see your certification. I'd like to see Ms. Dowd's certification and I should clarify because I'm taking quite a tone here and I'm aware of it. Ms. Dowd, I apologize. I have absolutely zero reason to believe that you are the cause of any of the issues that I am bringing up. I have zero reason to believe that you are responsible for any of the issues that I'm bringing up or even were aware of them. And I hope that it's clear by what I'm saying now that I'm not holding you responsible for them, but I am extraordinarily, I am furious about the fact that this was brought up and we were told at the last meeting that this was an issue that was fully resolved months ago. And then Moira was in some way inappropriate for asking questions about it, when it turns out the signatures that are on the form were not there until the day of our last meeting. Nothing that I've heard thus far, and I'm aware that I've been taking up a lot of the airtime, but nothing that I have heard thus far has in any way made me more comfortable about what I'm seeing. What I would like to see going forward, and I'll open this up to the rest of the board after this, but what I would like to see going forward is we need to have an actual motion in order to appoint a deputy treasurer. She needs to be bonded. I'm willing to accept the form as her bonding, but we need a motion before the board and we need, need a resolution. John, I'd be grateful if you could draft a resolution for Ms. Dowd to be considered by the board at our next meeting, s- so long as a consensus, the board is interested in doing so. I have no reason to believe she would not do an excellent job. I'll be honest with you. Lisa Barowski has made very clear to me that she would do a good job and I'm grateful for Lisa's intervention, but I, I would like to see the.
Correct you and say that the proper process was followed. It was followed for the prior deputy and it's followed now. And in fact, that you misunderstood what I said. I, I don't like your implication. I was not ever lying to the board.
Um, I actually, I did go back to the tape and you were asked by Commissioner Farhi, um, how long has, um, this person been deputy? And you said just a few months, just a month. And neither one of those were true, because these signatures were not. Even the form that you rely on, which I do not believe has the force of law. I think it's a form in order to implement the law um, in a way that I don't believe that we have followed. Um, but even if you thought that this form had the force of law, you did not have it in place for months or a month before you, before you stood in front of this board and the public and attested to such. So, um, I am also as, um,
Well, I respectfully disagree. And I was following the local tax collection law. It says that the law is the tax collector is appointing deputy.
And if you have the consent of the three taxing authorities, you've got the third, which was the, the Delaware County's, uh, manager.
Well, that's not the opinion of the president of the PA State Tax Collector Collection Association.
Well, that person can testify at one of our meetings. It's the opinion of me. It's the opinion of our solicitor.
Well, she's telling the entire tax association how to deputize. And that's happened. This is happening throughout the state. This is how it's done. And she said it only needs municipal approval, which is really a formality. The county and the school district do not have any statutory role in the process. So I was following what I did previously and what the previous treasurer did. And I'm sorry, it takes time, but that's, it does take time. It takes multiple tasks.
To that point, that it takes time, I don't think that you can assert that the deputy is the deputy until it has taken the time, even under your own, um, belief that the form is all that you need. The person is not the deputy until this form is filled out according to your logic. I believe that we need to have it in front of the board of commissioners as the taxing dex, district to approve. And the form is the formality, as you say, to ensure that the law has been implemented. But even under your logic, you claim that the person was a deputy. There is public
Right.
bio of, um, Ms. Dowd claiming to be Radnor's tax deputy tax collector long before this form was executed. And it just, the timing is off. The timing was wrong and it's not, it's not official or accurate.
May I speak? Uh, we, Laura's gone a couple of times, Commissioner Larkin.
Please.
I think that it's very important to understand that this has been the process for years since John Osborne has been in place, prior manager signed off on this. Uh, Ms. Gartland had no knowledge that this was going to be an issue in, and what I understood her to say was her understanding is once it's approved by, Mr. White, that, that that is the force of the township approval. And that's what she believed reasonably at the time. We also was never an issue with the school district because the school district had relinquished, had taken over tax collection services since 2004. The school district has been taking care of this and what by their own means for more than a decade. So the school district's approval was not something significant to them and it was not been part, part of prior practice. And what, uh, Ms. Gartland did was in accordance with prior practice and she reasonably believed that she was following the prior practice. She was always bonded. The prior deputy was always bonded. And at the time she stated that the, the new deputy was bonded, that was a true and accurate statement.
Rich, I 100% agree with the substance of what you're saying. I in no way fault Ms. Gartland for just relying on our prior township practice. Nobody brought this up until Moira started looking into this. And there's no reason other than just, you know, you're the treasurer, you might be interested in what our solicitor has to say. There's no reason to ask that question.
Well, also she's the treasurer because she's a separate elected employee or a separate elected official. We can, we don't appoint the treasurer. That's a very important element. She's elected. She selects it. There's an approval. She believes she got it. And that was reasonable under the circumstance. She's reasonable in her knowledge that she's a separate elected official. And she, and that we are not the people who, who direct her on who she appoints.
I hear you, Rich, but I asked a very specific question. I made clear last week that my question had to do with bonding. Were we bonded? What was our insurance? And it turns out that our insurance company had no idea that Ms. Dowd was or wasn't, I don't really know at this point, the deputy treasurer until April 26th, the day of our last meeting. And I was told that that's not a problem. Don't worry about it. She's been the deputy manager, deputy treasurer for a while now. There's no issue. She's bonded. And it turns out that that signature was gotten by our bonding agent on April 26th. I don't have a problem necessarily with Ms. Dowd being the treasurer. Again, Ms. Barowski has told me that she is excellent. I have a problem with the fact that when I ask a question about our bonding on the collection of our taxes in the township with a $36 million per year revenue. Like, it seems like there are people who are doing this who are not bonded.
Well, I am bonded.
Problem. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the deputy treasurer and the surety that you got at the day of our last meeting, which you then represented had been in place for a while.
No. Um, Sarah had been bonded. Yes.
Great. We're not talking about Sarah.
Well, she was the deputy and she's been bonded.
The treasurer, the treasurer was bonded. The, the deputy had been appointed and approved by the township manager. That was the belief. This would not have come to, into fruition. This would not be an issue if it wasn't on a biography. The biography was accurate in that there was an appointment.
Rich, I don't care about the biography. I'm trying to figure out what happens if we get sued.
And the only thing, the only thing I have about the biography is that I didn't know that Radnor had a ta, a deputy tax collector. It was an innocent inquiry into, do we have a deputy tax collector? I'd never heard that title before. So this is not, I'm, I'm not out to get anybody. I promise I'm not. And I, I don't, I have, I'm making no assertion about the qualifications of anybody that our treasurer has selected, um, in the past or currently. And I get it that this is the way it's always been done. I don't think that's good enough for our township to do things the way they've always been done, if they've not been done in accordance with the laws and the regulations of our state and our township. I just want to move forward in a way where we are protected, that we are following the letter of the law and that we don't find ourselves exposed to some sort of risk because we relied on a form instead of the ordinance or the, or the law on the books. That's what I am trying to do.
Just to be clear, the treasurer is bonded and that covers the deputy.
Enough or nothing, but I struggle to figure out why it is that a form that you got a signature from Bill White on on March 8th, we didn't get anything from our insurance agent for more than another month on. If all that we needed was.
I'm bonded and.
I don't care if you're bonded. I'm asking about your deputy.
Why?
And what I'm saying is that our surety company on this form, which you seem to believe is the be all and end all of the appointment process, includes signatures from the township manager, the school district manager and the county manager, as well as our surety company. And you waited to get the signature from the surety company until the day of our last meeting. And I find it wildly impossible and wildly incredible when you tell me that you think that it was unnecessary.
I'm saying that the deputy works for me and I'm bonded.
How many times do I have to say, I don't care. I'm looking at the form that you relied on. Our bonding agent doesn't care. I'd be willing to bet. How do I know? There's a form that requires you to get their signature.
They still would have had Sarah's on and I.
How would you know that Sarah exists? I'm sorry. I said Sarah.
We understand your point. We understand your point. I, I.
People don't, Rich.
I, I think, I think that this would not have come to pass if it hadn't been in election season and biography. Understand the point. I think that all people will be reasonable here. And, um, uh, I, I, if you want to do a resolution and approve it, I, I think that we should, uh, Uh, I I if you want to do a resolution and approve it, I I think that we should uh. Move that move along that way.
Okay, I'm gonna ask.
Can I ask a sure? Jack, you've been talking. Can I just jump in? I got two questions. They'll be quick. So and I'm confused. When was Ms. Dow bonded? Uh, as of what day? As of the twenty sixth of April? So that's when she got her insurance. So what would have happened?
Covered under me.
Okay, I'm sure. God forbid Catherine, something happened to you and you died two days before. Then what would have happened? She wouldn't have been bonded.
Sarah would have been the deputy, I guess, or bonded.
Well, I I mean, and and I'm not trying to be rude, but I bet, but I guess. To Commissioner Larkin's point, I I guess is not a. To me, not not an answer that I'm comfortable with when we're looking at a thirty million dollar, forty million dollar budget. Do you have? I'm just asking, do you have an answer or do you have a concrete answer? If you don't, you don't know, that's fine.
All right.
Okay, and then the other, go ahead.
I'm bonded. Amy's bonded.
But but that wasn't my question. So my question was, God forbid, something happened to you a couple of days prior. You're saying Sarah Osborne, is she out of the country? Or she is back in this country. She's out of the country. That would have been okay, a problem. And then finally, the I guess the next question is. In light of everything that happened, knowing what this is, would you have changed anything? To make to Commissioner Larkins' point to make a. You know, to to have a change, change, uh, change the way that you went about. Getting this form because I I mean, I I.
Well, I guess I would. Treasurer to rush about a little bit more. Um, um, maybe to get the signature of the manager and then immediately go to the. The surety office. And and you know, tell them to make it more of a priority, but it sits on people's. And it takes time. It's um, there were people working remotely. It it just takes. It's a it's a cumbersome. Process.
Okay, I I mean, my 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 point is and and it, you know, when stories change, um. It's definitely uncomfortable, but God forbid something happened to you. And Ms. Osborne is in a foreign country and Ms. Dowd is now uh the acting, really the acting treasurer and she's not bonded. It. It does send up, um, it does send up a concern. So. I'll leave it at there. I don't want to finger point. I don't want to yell or raise my voice, but. Um, to Commissioner Larkin and to Commissioner Booker's point, I think that we need um resolutions and everything signed and documented by this board. Uh, and beyond. That's all.
So this is uh new information to me that Sarah Osborne's out of the country. Do we know how long that was? I mean, she, did she leave the country on the third of March when you signed? Um, Ms. Dow on as deputy or were we without a deputy in the country for a period of time?
I believe she left sometime later in. In March.
Sarah regularly returns. She she's in England and back and back. She's she's regularly. She's regularly in in Radnor.
So let me ask a question. Is Sarah still a deputy? And Catherine, in your view, is she still deputized by you?
No.
Okay, so are you going to notify her? She's no longer a deputy?
Yes, she.
Okay. So. And and just, I mean, my. My my opinion on this all along, I know administratively, these. Deputy deputization forms have been signed by the township manager, but that's not what the statute says. It says that it has to be signed by the municipality. Which is the township, which is the Board of Commissioners and it's. You know, I I've been at public meetings where this is done. It's no, it's not a big issue. Um. The tax collector gets to appoint the deputy, but there's an approval by the municipality. So. That's the resolution I'll prepare. And if there's anybody else that. You want to deputize because I understand that maybe Amy Lacy from time to time steps in. She also ought to be deputized if that's going to occur during your term. So that would be good if you could let Bill White know regarding that because. Until the notice is given to the surety, nobody's bonded. No deputies are bonded. Amy's not bonded. She's not bonded by the township. She's covered by the township's insurance liability insurance, but that's separated. So anybody that you intend to use as a deputy, there's no limit on the number of deputies. Needs. The the surety needs to be notified, needs to be approved by the township. That's just clear on the statute. Um, and I know you spoke to Sherry Labs, who's the president of the Tax Collectors Association. She's the Plumstead Township Tax Collector. I've known her for twenty some years where there's solicitor. And I don't think her email that she sent you disagrees with my opinion at all. Um, so, but that's the correction that needs to be done. You know, the township manager really doesn't have the authority to sign off on those documents. It's got to come to the board. Like any other type of an appointment and it's a it's a pro forma approval typically. Uh, for the deputy and then. And then the surety gets notified and then the deputy is covered. Under the treasurer's policy, not before. Deputy's not covered before that. And I think that's the issue that somehow. She thought she was the deputy, Ms. Dow, I guess, or you thought in March, yet until April twenty sixth. There's no, there's no bond. Um, because that notification has to be there. And in fact, the notification has to be done to all the taxing uh entities. If you deputize anybody, then that has to be distributed. That's in the act also. Um, that notification of deputies. County and the school district, even though in some cases they don't need to sign off on it, they still need to be notified. Anyway.
Certification requirement as well.
There's a statewide, um, in two thousand and fifteen, there were a couple amendments to the local tax collection law and. There is a qualified tax uh collection certification that D C E D does. I don't know. How many hours that that is, but you can't take office. Um. You can be elected in November and then you have to get certified before January. Before you take office because it's a it's a um. Um, it's a condition of office. If you're not certified, the office is deemed vacant. Uh, there's also some criminal history record information that has to be filed also. And if that's not done. The office is deemed vacant. So. It it's and this was all. Done in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, these requirements. Uh, prior to that. And there was some litigation that went on um a little bit before that about tax collectors statewide. So, but I'll prepare a resolution. Uh, as requested, uh, designating. I missed out as the deputy and if and if there's any other deputies. Um, Catherine, let me know before the next meeting so that I can include those also for the board.
Can I?
Thank you. Um, I probably will add A Amy Lacy as well. So thank you.
Can I just ask um two quick questions? So John, to your point of all these certifications and things that need to happen. Who who's responsible for communicating that to a newly elected treasurer that they need to get this stuff done? You know? Um, I remember when I joined the school board, we went to P S B A and had a whole school board. Day of school board training or two days, I think, of school board training. I mean, who communicates this to elected officials? Is this something the state needs to let them know that all of these things need to happen? Is there like a guidebook that you get? Um, and then my.
There's a handbook.
Yeah.
Okay, um, because you know, people run for office and get elected and. You know, unless somebody tells you what to do, like, how do you know? Um. So, but who's responsible for communicating that again? Is it the state? Is it the township? Like who who interfaces on that?
Well, it's it's really the state. I mean, as. You know, it's been has been pointed out, the tax collector slash treasurer is a separate. Uh, separately elected officer and the township has limited oversight. Um, there's approval of deputies. Um, township pays the bond costs. The township sets compensation by February fifteenth of the year in which the office is vacant. If it's going to change. School district and counties do the same. So there's some, there's some limited oversight. The statewide organization, which Catherine was in touch with her president, um, Sherry Labs. Uh, they do a really good job. That group did not exist ten years ago. Um, and um, and there's a book, as as Moira said, there's a, there's a handbook. D C E D is primarily responsible. D C E D, I believe, puts the training on. Uh, D C E D keeps a roster of uh certified tax collectors. Um, but the certification, once that's achieved by a tax collector, that's supposed to be filed with the township also. And um, you know, that's something that needs to be on file. Uh, I think the township. Has not really exercised. And and there really isn't an opportunity for supervision in most cases. Radnor's a little different because the township staff is involved in the tax collection. Uh, piece. There's also some reporting requirements. Under the local tax collection law, there's a monthly report. That um. You know, should be done. So, you know, Bill and I have spoken about some of these requirements. Um. But Lisa, there is, you know, it's it's hit or miss to some extent with. You know, township by township. Some of these offices are totally independent and other than township space. They have their own employees. They do everything. Uh, they collect county township and school taxes. Where in Radnor's case, it's just the township taxes. So. Um, but I think there's a set of. Basic guidelines we can put together along with this resolution. So that going forward, anyone that's interested in the office. You know, there'll be some something in print in the township um for that person.
Thank you, John. I appreciate that clarification. And then my other question is, if the, if you're putting together a resolution for us to approve. Does the school district need to have a similar resolution? Does the county need to have a similar resolution? I mean, I remember when I was on the school board and Rich, you may remember, we used to vote every year to. Pay the township treasurer not to collect the school taxes and I don't even know if that still happens. Um, but you know, would the school but school board need to approve it as well as the county?
No, they they've already signed off on it, Lisa. However, they deem to do that is really up to them. Um. You know, they they have, maybe, maybe they've delegated it. You know, to the administration to be done. I don't think Radnor's done that. Um, it hasn't been delegated. It's just been an informal. Uh, way that it's been done. Um, but statute's pretty clear. Um, you know, that the municipality, which in this case is Radnor, has to prove it. And, you know, unless it's been delegated to the manager, which it hasn't been, it's got to come back. It's got to come before the board.
Okay, thank you.
John, I would also ask, as you're developing this, it sounds like, you know, we will be. Putting together the procedures or protocols as as to be in compliance. Um, I also ask that that monthly report that is supposed to come from the treasurer to the. Board of Commissioners or I, sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but there is a monthly reporting requirement. I don't think that we've ever seen that. In my time on the board or in any of our financial reporting. So um, while we're in there, can we sort of tighten up all of the. Requirements outside of just deputizing and um bonding the the deputy tax collector, please?
Sure. You know, Bill will have to uh and Amy Lacy will have to address that with Catherine. You know, how to produce that. Um, but that is a requirement also under the.
There's a form. D C E D has a form.
Mm hmm.
Okay. Is there any public comment?
I think that's me, right? I'm allowed to comment now?
You certainly are.
Okay.
And again, I apologize. I want to stress, I'm not. I'm clearly torqued. I want to make clear I'm not torqued at you.
Okay, thank you. Um, since the um. Proposal will come out up at the next meeting. I just wanted to um mention a couple of things about my qualifications. Uh, I've been a Radnor resident for almost twenty five years. I have over thirty years of financial and accounting experience. I have over fifteen years of um real estate management experience. I have a lot of experience with internal controls and processes. Um, so I'm definitely qualified and uh Catherine has my resume and we talked about that fact before. We talked about um. Having me appointed as a deputy. Uh, I also want to be clear that I have not opened any envelopes, touched any money. Uh, that Catherine and I have talked about what um the position is and what the deputy would be, but. Uh, there was no risk at all that um that the township has been exposed.
Were you paid anything? Do you mind me asking? Were you paid a dollar? You haven't been paid anything either?
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, I will move to.
I have, I have, I have business, Jack.
Okay.
Um, so we're gonna have the um vacancy uh vote on Wednesday. Is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay, um, is it possible to have a list um of the candidates' names and their correspondence for their resumes? Um, so the public can see, so we can weigh. Uh, you know, so the public knows who they are and then they can weigh in. Um, I know that when I ran for an appointment, um, my name was well out there. Um. And if I had a resume, I'm sure if it wasn't put on the website, um, which is really where we have to go now. Um, my name or information was put at the front table. Um, when you walk into the Radnorshire room. So I just think that it's a best practice for transparency. That the people that have, um, and there still could be more people that come. Um, but at least for now. Because we're toward the end of that uh that process, um, that the people that have um. Thrown their names in, uh, that we know who they are and the ward three residents can. Um, see who they are and if they need to contact us or uh make comments um as to who these people are. That's all.
They'll be in the packet, will they not? Uh, well, the the names definitely will.
Okay. They'll they'll be in the packet and when was that? Is that packet out or not?
No, the the packet is not.
So so I mean.
Actually, we could amend the agenda to include the names, although. As you pointed out, with names being submitted, you know, as late as even last night, um, that's a bit of a moving target. So. I mean, we're happy to do, you know, what what the board wants to do.
Well, sure, but but for the sense of uh and the sake of transparency to say, uh, you know, at three o'clock. Here, here are the names of the people that we're going to vote on. Go go do your research and vet them in three hours or four hours. I think that's unreasonable. It's not fair to this board. It's not fair to the. The people of Ward seven or not Ward seven of Ward three. Um, and I just don't think that it's a, if that's the case, I I just don't think it's transparent.
But we have the resumes.
No, no, we do, but it's the public. It's not about us, about the public.
But we're the ones that make the decision. Aren't we the ones that make that? I'm trying. I'm trying to think what we did last time because. I don't think that we put the resumes out there and then everyone came and the candidates came and they spoke. At a meeting and actually I think they spoke at two meetings. We had.
They they did.
So. Yes, we had two opportunities. I think they came and spoke at one meeting. I don't know, Jack, you probably remember, of course, like I can't remember what I had on yesterday, but they spoke at one meeting. Um, and I think they came back and spoke at another meeting and then. Then we voted down. Then we voted then, I, I feel like. I, I can't remember.
I, I can, I can, uh, tell you what it was for me, um, that I came and spoke at at least two meetings, if not the third one, it went to the vacancy. As of now, the Ward Three constituents don't even know who's running necessarily. Um. So they don't have time to vet these people, and I think that, um, I want to hear from the residents on, um, who these people are. Um. No, I'm, I'm, so, um. That's, that's the issue. Um, when I ran and, and, uh, when, um, Matt Marshall became, um. The interim, there were meetings, and these people were at meetings, and they had to speak in front of the board. And I just see that they're, um, that this is a disservice to the. The constituents in, uh, in the ward and, and to us, because. Uh, it's about information, and we should be able to, to get feedback from the, the residents. That's all I got to say.
John, I, I don't disagree with you. Um, I think putting the, the names and, um. Information, you know, at least so that people know who they are. I, I, I would leave it to someone else to decide if resumes are public, I, I think probably. Um. However, you know, this isn't, this isn't an election. It's an appointment, so they're not running. They've, they've submitted their. Names for consideration, um, to us. Um, but I do believe that it should be public so that people could come out and, and. Voice their opinion, but you know, the, the election is in November where the voters get to. Um, determine who they elect for this position, so I would just make that, that minor distinction.
Sure, but that, so that's, that's not how it was done in the past. Um, in the past, there was. You know, these, you know. We're, we're, we're going to wind up picking people to represent these people for, what, going close to six months? Um. I, I think that we need to hear from these people. I think that this should have been done a while ago. Um, I don't think it's this board that gets to decide. I think it's this board that gets to decide with input. From the constituents. Of, of the ward. I just think that it is, is a, is a lack of, uh, transparency, and I want to hear. I'm, you know, if you throw your name in late and, you know, you don't get that benefit, but I want to hear from the constituents. I want to hear what they have to say about these people. When I ran, not ran, pardon me, when I, uh, put my name out to be appointed. Um. Who was it? Uh, Tom Lowry. Uh, met with, uh, people in my ward, um, uh, at Flipping Bally's. To hear what they have to say and what they were, uh, what they're. Uh, you know, you know, what, what they wanted. Uh, in a candidate, that, and the candidate, but in a commissioner, because they're going to be. Whether they're appointed or elected, they're going to be that commissioner. And he went and he. Had basically a, uh, a town hall meeting style, and I think that's important. Um. Uh, yeah, at the end of the day, we decide, but we should do it in concert with. Uh, what some of these residents want, and by not. Even telling them who they are, again, it's, uh. Yeah, I don't know. I, I, it rubbed, it kind of chaps me. Uh, if, if that was, uh, if I was in that position. Where I don't know who, who, who it's going to be. Um. I, I don't know. Uh, it just rubs me the wrong way. I just, I don't think it sends a good message.
Well, the agenda's already posted. Can we just add the names to the agenda? And it sounds like, do we get like another name? Since the stuff came out last week?
So we have three names now. Um, the agenda's already posted. I suggest let's amend the agenda to have the names, and in the packet, we can put the. Uh, resumes that we have.
And then if, uh. If another applicant comes forward or multiple applicants come forward between now and Wednesday?
Uh, I mean, unfortunately, I think that we probably, if we're going to put some people's names in, we have to put every, everybody's name in. And for the packet, well, whenever we normally post the packet, we'll put all the resumes in. Um, and we'll just keep. I say we, as if I'm going to be the person who's doing it. Peggy. For whom I'm grateful can be updating the, uh, resumes in the packet.
Yeah, if it's, if it's not done, if someone that says at four o'clock, then they don't get their name in, but I just think if, we shouldn't have been sitting on these names. And the resumes there the whole time. If I went and I got a right to know request. Who these people are and what their resumes were, I'd be allowed to pull it. I don't think that this is private information. This in, information is pertinent to the ward, pertinent to the township. And it would be easily gotten for a right to know request. And maybe the, the, um, people that were running for the appointment. Should have asked, hey, can we put your resume in this packet? Um, I, I don't know.
So it'll be in the packet. Okay. Any additional business?
So I, I apologize. Just, uh, we're putting the resume in the public packet?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Did we vote on it? Or is it consensus?
I think we just have a consensus.
Okay.
That's pretty clear. Is there any final public participation? Ms. Winters, you are up.
Okay, can you hear?
We can hear.
Yes.
Right. Good evening. I'm Alberta Winters, and I'm speaking tonight as president of the League of Women Voters of Radnor Township. I, tonight, I wish to advocate for the board to consider. The adoption of a more transparent and a less partisan process. For redrawing ward lines as a result of the recent census results. Many things have changed in the last five years since we completed and shared a study of the manner in which. Current ward lines were configured in Radnor. However, our commitment to people-powered fare maps has grown in importance. Although we fully recognize that it is the Board of Commissioners prerogative to approve the final ward map. We request that you consider greater public oversight and how the lines are drawn. We believe there are at least two options that would accomplish this. First, there is an independent citizen commission. That would be formed based on the recommendations of a temporary committee established by the board. This group would review and recommend governing rules and regulations, including, but not limited to. The selection, eligibility criteria, and appointment of members. Data requirements. Preparation of a timeframe for completion and approval of the preliminary and final plans. And public communication requirements. A second option would be to establish an override root oversight role within existing working group process. One or more independent, nonpartisan organizations, such as the League of Women Voters, Common Corps, or others, could sit in on the meetings. Their role would be to report any actions that would be. Determined to impede a fair, objective, and a criterion-based process to the full Board of Commissioners in a public forum. Given technological advances in recent years. Other options are evolving, including a draw the line contest that may be worthy of consideration by this board. We appreciate your ongoing sys- consideration as to ways to help make democracy work. Members of the League, as you know, are most willing to collaborate with you in this process in the future, so thank you.
Thank you. Any additional final comment? Seeing none, I will move to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye, adjourned.
Good night, everyone.